The planning board was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the Post Star, our official newspapers, and noticed that this meeting was posted on the bulletin board on this Sunday.
Thank you, April. Good evening and welcome to the August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Borough of Belmar Planning Board. Please join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. April, roll call, please.
Mr. Meyer?
President.
Mr. Kirkley?
Present.
Mr. Delazio?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Lomis?
Here.
Mr. Sharkey?
Here.
Mr. Biaro and Councilman Levis are absent.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five meeting?
I'll give a motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Kirkley?
Yes.
Mr. Delazio?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lomis?
Seen.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Biaro and Councilman Levis are absent.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution approving the application of Jenna Campfield at Hazel Boutique at twelve oh two Main Street?
I'll offer it.
Thank ma'am, a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Kirkley?
Yes.
Mr. Delazio?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lomis?
Seen.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Biaro and Councilman Levis are absent.
Yes.
Thank you very much. First up, we have a courtesy review of the Sixteenth Avenue Boardwalk bathroom.
Can you give a little background back on this?
Yes, please, Doug.
Um, regard to these matters, this is, as you say, it's courtesy review. It's actually governed by the municipal land as long as forty colon fifty-five B minus thirty-one, as well as our oral ordinance forty colon three point one five ten. Essentially, if you have a master plan and if you're going to be expending public monies for a public project, basically it comes before the planning board. We are not approving the project. They are not asking for relief, but as a planning entity, we give an opportunity to review the capital project and make comments on that to Mayor and Council if we have any concerns. This evening, we have for us from our meeting, Jason Klein, who's going to walk us through the application. Um, we have a couple exhibits tomorrow and we'll go on to the continuation of DNR Urban Renewal. Is likely workshop that while we're here?
Please.
With regard to, this is a continuation of the hearing with regard to DNR Belmar Urban Renewal LLC. This is one parcel that's located over on eight hundred, eight-ten, nine-ten, referred to as a penny parcel. Um, we were here last time. The applicant has since made some revisions. If you will bear with me for just a brief moment where I think we were with regard to, if you don't recall these names, you're not bound by my recollection. Let's sort of give you where I think we were last time. Some board members express a concern about the traffic report, that it did not take into account train hours, the applicant, and with regard to how that might impact peak hour factors. It's also a concern about some development as to whether or not the roadways could be sufficient to accommodate traffic. There was a request by several members with regard to redesign the roof elevation, or the elevations previously with regard to the roofs to match the concept plan. Essentially, a lot more peaks and eaves along the roof were proposed on the concept plan that we did not see there. A number of comments with regard to bike racks, both interior and what about the would-be sign, how that would work. We had some testimony with regard to the would-be bike racks, but then there was also a concern expressed as to whether or not there would be additional bike racks placed outside from visitors coming into the site. So hopefully we'll hear a little about that. There was also requests of the outdoor furniture, such as bench, benches and the bike racks. The trash receptacles themselves be incorporated into the site plan, and that a sustainability check was to be given. Again, in addition to the change in the elevation with regard to roofs, I have also a request to take complete visits to Pellet Palace, as it's not getting from the seashore community. There were some, couple things that the applicant agreed to provide with regard to I have number twenty-one. Uh, the zoning schedules basically put back on the, on the sites as well as signature plots. Um, I think there was a discussion and a confirmation by the applicant that the apartment inside would be designed apartment. I don't know if we got to how that signage would be displayed or how that was going to be controlled. A number of things with regard to, again, we did have discussion as to the location of the trash recycling facilities, but I think there was a request to have some discussion about the pathway through that facility given the size of this particular location. Number of things with regard to the potential fire official, um, I think by way of fire lanes, um, impact of the site location, number of fire hydrant stand pipes, and make sure that we did get some approval from the fire official. I have not seen anything further from the fire official. I don't know if that damage was in our materials. Uh, there was also going to be a confirmation of a supplemental summer review, a fire engineer and supplemental water review, uh, would be provided under separate cover. There was also some discussion with regard to no adverse impact of the lighting. The applicant did admit to, you know, they would take steps to make sure that the lighting would be designed not to be outside of the study. Additional things that we probably want to button up by way of different conditions and/or extra matters to address. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't specifically stated, but I'm assuming the applicant will be able to confirm that there's going to be separate reading to the residential duties. Um, there was a discussion as to whether or not we'd be able to place utilities underground. I think there was confirmation of that, but also I believe that there was still some, my term, efforting with regard to the removal of telephone poles, utility poles. I don't think we have a firm letter on that or a firm answer on that. They don't know if we saw little serve letters. Probably wants to get something like that. Again, that can be a condition approval, um, such as sustainability checklists. Specific locations for the AC, AC and indoor generators and that as a condition, they want to consider that the areas that I would refer to as the humanities packet, we saw a couple of things about those, that they would not result in habitable areas. Uh, again, discussion of the light, lights village to neighborhood residents and generally that the applicant, unless they identify something in, in their review, that they will not be conforming to the planning, planners, and or engineers reports, you can expect them to be disowned. I think those are the things. Uh, I'm not saying that that's the only thing that we may have discussion for, that there will be a dispute with things that are directed by, by council on behalf of the applicant. Those are from my notes to sort of highlight where we were last time.
Thank you, Doug.
Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing. There also is, I know that there's a proposed freestanding sign. We'll have some initial testimony on that by way of the size, whether or not any experience with any of those types of things. I do note that with regard to the standards, generally the sign should not be higher than eight feet or wider than four. Um, my understanding of facade signs, by way of the wall mounts, they're still being proposed, but I think that they are of a smaller dimension.
All right. If we can, let's move forward with the courtesy review of the Sixteenth Avenue Boardwalk bathroom. Jason, if you would, please.
You saw my last name before the first one.
Yes, sir.
Just state your name loud, spell your last name for purpose of the record.
My name is Jason Klein. Last name is C.L.I.N.E. I'm an engineer with Remy and Burt Engineers. Anything else you want to fire out?
Um, license and safety, just a little of your CV.
I have a Bachelor of Science in Engineering from Case Restaurant Reserve University in nineteen ninety-six. Um, I've been licensed in New Jersey since two thousand and six as a professional engineer, since two thousand and nineteen as a professional planner, and I've been with Remy and Burt for twenty years, and I've appeared as board engineer or conflict engineer and actually a case's planner for roughly a dozen municipalities.
You're fail to qualify as a planner or a engineer?
No, sir.
I would recommend we each have our experiences.
We each have. Thank you, Jason.
If, if we can, just very briefly, I'd like to mark PB one as the, I guess, whatever the word for the site document, um, revised till August sixth, twenty twenty-five, PB one. PB two will be the architectural, again, means we're a packet of, I think, we're sorry, thirteen pages of documents with regard to the architectural, PB two. These are revised August eighth, and I think there are some forge documents with regard to those, not as far as August. Obviously, I'm going to go through all of the senior messages today. Do I have any?
I have a full set of books, if the board is interested, but I, I brought you excerpts. I have the, the main site plan from the civil site drawing, and I have the elevations from the front and the floor plan from the architectural plan. Is this adequate for what I'm standing?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll remind the board that our objective in this courtesy review is to note any areas of concern, any comments that we want to bring back to Mayor and Council. So as you go through the review, feel free to ask any questions so that you feel comfortable of any concerns you may have. If we can't vet those, we'll go through Doug and get a.
Just looking at my bullet points, I think I have the main interior showing personally. We need you to talk about materials. This project is funded by Boardwalk Reservation Grants for one point five million dollars. For a mansion, this project is seventy-five thousand dollars. The intent of this project is to replace the seasonal restrooms at Sixteenth Avenue with a permanent facility. The building will have six stalls and eight urinals for men, twelve stalls for women, and a family restroom. The location, you're probably familiar, is the south side of Sixteenth Avenue, east side of the boardwalk and generally across from the Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, the finished floor elevation is real rule compliant. The building design and the finished floor elevation will be similar to the Rowland Public Safety Building in style. Uh, there will not be any A air conditioning, but it will be mechanically ventilated. It will be heated year-round. Status, it is currently in final command with CAPRA at the NJDB eight, and CAPRA has actually dictated the building location. The short version, the building was required, required to be placed in the footprint of the prior building, but could be shifted left or right, but no closer to the ocean. The location required the ramp to be on the side of the building and not between the building and the boardwalk. This is CAPRA's dictating. The beach access ramp and playground will be relocated to accommodate the building and ramp. The schedule is to bid the project as soon as possible and try to have this ready for the beginning of summer two thousand and twenty-six. That's the layout of, of the building internally. This is the elevation of what it will look like from the front, and this is a large, uh, the civil site is largely used for locating and spacing your mind.
Could you walk us through materials, only inside, outside, what you're proposing? And can you give some, can you give some approximate dimension of the facility?
Um, the facility, yeah, I'll pull that up now.
Take your time.
Uh, the facility is fifty foot, three inches wide and thirty foot, five inches deep. Uh, asphalt roofing, shingles, match style and color of Taylor Pavilion and Howard Rowland Pavilion. Sample will be submitted for review approval. Guard rail, composite fascia trim board, building mounted signage by owner, white-finished aluminum octagonal gable vent with screening, stationary mover, white paint finish, air louvers, actually can both end pieces. Looking for the sign, ah, fiber cement horizontal siding, exterior wall, painted composite trim, fiber cement vertical panel siding. And as you can see, uh, it's white from ground up to a chair around, and then the light blew up to the end.
Height of the charger?
Let's see. Uh, roof high point is listed as twenty-one foot, two inches tall.
So there's a, there's a first floor for the, for the lavatory facility. There's an upper level, but that's just for mechanicals?
Mechanical.
And how do you access the upper level?
Uh, I would have, I would have to check in the big.
It's a, yes, it's pulled down.
It's pulled down, yeah. And it's coming out of the utility closet, correct?
Yep. There's an eighty-six square foot utility closet, and yes, there's a pull-down.
Can you give us an idea of some of the materials interior as to what they are, um, finished treatments?
We've got A, A E stalls, um. I have the larger architectural. I was invited to do it in two months on the interior.
I guess the attic, the attic is largely H V A C.
Would you, would you like my chair or my table? Would it make it easier? Uh, you know, I can ask questions for many of them. Take your time.
Okay. Toilet accessories, and all the toilets are listed as, uh, frameless mirrors, uh, partitions are plastic H D V, maximum toilet partitions. Where are my toilet versions? Looking for the colors for you. And, um, door frames. Light fixtures, of course, are all M E D, some service.
Let me see if I can do this. All of the lavatory facilities, both the urinals and the toilets, they're, they're wall-mounted, correct? So there's space underneath them?
Yes.
In regard to the materials, we're looking at A seven five, where the first floor finished with, there's a suggestion that the floor is a terrazzo roof.
You have me to disavant, I don't have A seven five.
Okay.
This, these are the architectural plans.
Seven, seven, five, zero.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Tap the back.
The very last one.
Of course.
Of course it would be.
Yes.
Terrazzo roof wall tile, uh, terrazzo floor tile, uh, manufactured dial-toe proof equal. Twelve by twenty-four tile size on the walls. Edging corner protection is stainless steel. We generate a, a tile finish and a, and an accessible floor, like you were saying, you don't have pedestals or things impacting the floor for cleaning purposes, and lots of stainless and aluminum edges and fixtures and that sort of thing.
You have the utility closet for ease of cleaning the facility?
Yes. Utility closet basically straddles the wall between the men's and women's sides, and there's a door in both directions.
And the family, family lavatory is accessible from the boardwalk, it's not from the interior?
Correct. It's solely accessible from the boardwalk.
And all of these are ADA compliant?
Uh, there are two ADA compliant stalls in the women's section, and there's one ADA compliant, uh, one ADA compliant stall and one ADA compliant urinal in the men's side.
Okay. All that's accessible ADA compliant.
Yeah, the whole, the whole building is ADA accessible, the specific units or facilities, as I said.
Any proposed lighting or any, any signage in regard to place?
Um, there is a, uh, the elevations depict the, just the logo Belmar on the front. Otherwise, you know, typical markings for a restroom in terms of men, women, family, et cetera. Um, and then the lighting, I was just at a moment ago, for schedules and details. Okay. Yeah, there's flush-mounted twelve-by-forty-eight LED ceiling lights on the internal and recessed extension exterior soffit lights on the sofa, obviously. And there's also a number of wall-mounted linear sconces mounted to the surfaces to be on the wall, on the other wall.
Any exterior lighting or what's existing now?
I have soffit lighting, and I'll go over to the site plan and see if I have anything to bear on that in a moment. Okay, yeah, the sconces are actually interior, uh, on either side of the mirrors, then there's ceiling lights, and then there's soffit lights on the outside. And then to check on lighting, I don't think I have any deal in experience. We're not going to do it to the engineering plans for the agency if there's detail there. I do not see an explosive light plan, so let's see if I have, I have a few issues. I do not see an indication of that additional alcohol light at all. It's mainly the lighting under the, the exterior lighting and between the lighting on the sofa, sofa, which will light the wall ways.
And you also mentioned in your initial remarks, there's, I guess there are some playground or children activities or areas where they can play. That's an initial move and then relocated about?
Correct.
Okay.
And actually, the title sheet that I, the sheet that I have over there shows that, and I'll read some of the text off since I have it. Now, it's proposed late, proposed location for a large piece of jungle gym playground equipment to be relocated, proposed location for small piece of jungle gym playground equipment to be relocated, uh, matching existing fourth-foot high wood snow fence. Uh, there's a, the design of an ADA ramp here with a third-foot ramp and landing area, steps down, there's actually multiple ramps that are coming around here, flight landing hour, shower tower. Yeah, there's apparently two large apparatus that are being relocated.
But no new additional equipment sort of?
Not that I see here, not that both my bullet points had. Gas, refrigeration, utilities, crested landing, uh, and a railing, uh, along the front.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Unless the board has questions?
Is the screen at the lower side of the structure, has had a composite material?
Uh, movable screen for structural drawings, screen to match existing tail of the lead typical extended grade, and it's marked, it, this whole area is marked as composite fascia, so I can do so.
So is that a yes?
I probably don't have a structural here.
Yeah, I don't have the structural to be able to respond. There's a few sections that refer to structural that I can't necessarily respond to. Okay. Um, Merk, we're going to start with your questions, comments?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, thank you. Chris?
Pretty straightforward. I've got some more question. Do you know, you mentioned it was matching elevation, the elevation finish for the relation of the tenth Avenue Pavilion. Do you know where that is in relation to the boardwalk and how much of a ramp we have coming up from the boardwalk? No, there are elevations shown here beneath that. Finish floor here is nineteen point two-six, and the ramp of the boardwalk is coming up. I'm showing the ramp that will be built between this building and the playground area. Uh, the elevation at the base of this fourteen point oh five, and then it goes up, landing and comes back to the walkway from the, from the boardwalk. Yeah. It, it, it looks like, uh, five point, oh, five point two feet. I just wanted to confirm that it's all been to accessible property, ADA compliant? Yeah. Yeah, a, a good portion of the infrastructure that's going around the building itself is specifically ADA to deal with the elevation changes and et cetera.
Anything else? Nope.
Uh, no. Pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think my, my concern was addressed by Doug. You know, something like this, you want the finishes to be able to last because it's going to, you know, used, uh, and I think the time of the water will, it's a good idea. I think on the hand dryer, that's somewhere over, you know, not the place, but, you know, for Mayor and Council, uh, those blowers always get really moldy whenever there's tile behind it, so I've seen places make something specific to kind of catch that moisture from the grill, so there might be something there.
So the concern is that on tile, you've seen that?
Yeah, so whenever you have a blower, the moisture from your hands goes straight onto the wall, and so under the, if you look under blowers, you'll always, it gets moldy.
I think they know what you're talking about. Sometimes it'll leave a hair against the back of the wall. I've even seen it almost as J-shaped.
Yeah, just to avoid, to avoid the grout being there so that the grout doesn't pick up all that moisture from the, you know, turn.
Okay. That's a good point. Thank you. Luther?
Thank you, Mayor.
Doug? Any question?
No.
Okay. So it sounds like the only comment is, you know, be cognizant of the hand dryer in terms of some form of vacuum. And that I think we're good.
Okay.
I'm assuming, you know, I don't have structural to look at, but my assumption is the structural tick and tie, so, um, you know, from an exterior material standpoint, it should be consistent with what's a tail of the building, so it should be good. I think that's our only comment.
Hypert technically, this is your review and your review alone. If you want to take public comment on it, inform the.
We can, absolutely.
As I say, this is, this is your review and your review alone. This is not.
It'd be good, it'd be good to hear from the public. Uh, if someone would like to make a comment about this bathroom, courtesy review of it, please step forward, come to the microphone, state your name, spell it, register address, and offer up your comment. Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion.
I would like a motion, second, as we prepare the writing, assisting with all his comments to address these for the afternoon.
Can I get that motion?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right.
Lawn paper?
Aye.
And my phone?
All right. Next up on the agenda is that of DNR Urban Renewal LLC is a continuation from our July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
Don't you bring anybody to testify. We'll re-spare them just in case.
Job's going in.
Last time, whoever's going to testify, think they might have some comment.
Tell you to jump outside and then more on the picture.
I'll also, I mean, as I said, same instructions I gave before, every sit down there. Same instructions I gave before, uh, regard to test, want to keep your voice up. Before you start testifying, spell your last name for purpose of the record in case we need to make the transcript on the transcript and follow the speaking. I've got a couple things I want to mark for exhibits, and I know you've had a couple additional, so we'll keep up and get out of the way. Great. Um, we have, we do have a number of additional exhibits that apply to us. I have marked as A twenty-nine, August eighth, twenty twenty-five, uh, applicant sent an area letter responsive to some of the concerns that have been expressed. A thirty is the revised architectural, I think it'll revise as to the date of August seventh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, A thirty-one are the revised landscapes, uh, design of eighth, eighth twenty-five. A thirty-two are the revised primary and primary. A thirty two are revised primary and final site plans, again by the American Engineering, August seventh, twenty twenty five. We also have, um, what I've marked as PB tens, the Borough Planters, August fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty five third review. Um, Borough Engineers, August seventh, twenty twenty five, water sewer, uh, design. PB twelve, uh, we don't have a certification, you know, so we're now seeing there's no problem sitting in, but you will not be committed to voting, see, because I think you did that through review.
Okay.
Um, I did want to confirm, did we receive, uh, at least, we had it worked as A twenty seven four before, this was to be supplied by the advocate consisting of images within the PowerPoint presentation, did we receive that from you?
It's A twenty seven. Uh, yeah, A twenty seven.
Okay. That'll still be outstanding, again, same thing that I'd like to do this evening, if you're going to have a PowerPoint presentation, let me know. We're now up to, we're now up to A thirty three. If you have additional things that you want to add more to have us consider, let's start at A thirty three.
So, again, I marked as A thirty three. We stand up, pass out there.
Just give me an identification of what it is, date, title.
These are regulars titled, uh, New Design from Bell Mark. Seven pages, well, not enough.
Do you have a date on it?
Uh, no, they don't have. There's, there's also signage you want to say into this package. Those are the dates.
I'm seeing, because I'm seeing two seven.
One, one question.
That, that may be the original, I don't think I've seen the revised date. And these are, how many pages? Do you count?
It's, uh, nine pages though.
Nine pages for A thirty three, we'll just characterize them as architectural rendering new design, inclusive new sign. Thank you. Any other documents?
Um, we have the exhibits of the, of the new one.
We had the one marked previously, right? So mark the new one as A thirty four?
So some of these, uh, these are from the last meeting, some of them are new, and they're contained in these.
Okay, why don't we just mark the one board as A thirty four of new elevation?
I think these two were previously marked, this one on the mark forty three four. This one on the mark eighty five.
And A thirty five. Or with?
And A thirty six, then A thirty seven.
Let me do it this way. The A thirty four, which is the new elevation, we had not previously marked, what does that view?
That is, uh, looking south from Route thirty five, running the area.
A thirty five elevation?
Is looking, uh, from the marina slightly more.
A thirty six?
A thirty six is the, the pool remedy area. And A thirty seven is, uh, the corner of the northern part of the property, closer.
And you know the document?
Actually, I'm sorry, A thirty seven is, uh, looking at the building from the, where the railroad.
Railroad.
We also have some, some materials that we're going to share with you on?
Material board, marking material board as A thirty eight. Yeah, like we did last time, just put those in front of the table and watch it on the floor. And we can describe what those are for purpose of record, but we'll just leave it as one mark in B thirty eight. Anything else?
I believe that is a.
Okay, and same thing with regard to what we did before, I'd like to make a confirmation, as we said with A twenty seven, that anything that you produce on the PowerPoint, I know we've got some of those things, but you get that to me, I'll mark that PowerPoint as A thirty nine for the senior's PowerPoint. Anything else?
That is it.
Now get out of your way.
My introduction again, my name is Mark Cleveland, I'm with CSG. We're very pleased to be back here before the board to show you the changes that we made. We spent quite a bit of time, digested everything that we got from the last meeting. We made some really, we did nice changes, the comments that were offered were helpful, and we hope that we achieved our joint vision for what's going to be in this proper, uh, Mr. Blakemore Architect is prepared to testify on the changes. Um, could you get the, we have it up on screen already. Uh, Mr. Blakemore, could you describe, um, A thirty seven compared to the earlier iteration, especially at the corner?
Yeah. So you can see, uh, in these two exhibits here, uh, looking at the same view, uh, the prior, uh, rendering shows, you know, this coloration, uh.
Can I just ask for the individual's, as I say?
Oh, I'm sorry. BLAKD.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, you know, we, we took what the, uh, what the board members, what we, you all have, uh, had asked for, and, uh, you can see in the new, uh, design, we made a couple architectural moves, we, we dealt with the corner, we, we shifted one of the hip roofs over to the corner as you're looking down, uh, Route thirty five. Uh, we can, we completely changed the color palette and dramatically weaponed it up, um, with soft off-weights, um, and also a couple of grays. And we also added, um, some textures, some details, you can see on the, uh, the base of the building garage, uh, we added, uh, what we call the Bermuda type, uh, movers that have slipped out. So it shields, um, some of the garage, it adds a level of detail and color to the, uh, to the base. Uh, we added that, uh, seafoam green, uh, tone, so that as you go up the facade, it goes, you know, from, you know, the, uh, a little bit darker tone to starting to, uh, get to a lighter tone. Um, we changed the, the root, the root colors to, again, a, you know, a seafoam type green. Um, we also added a lot more of the wooden pattern, um, um, facade, uh, you know, where you had the vertical battens, and we pretty much added that to, uh, to a good part of the, uh, facade of the garage. Um, we also changed all the railings from glass to, um, to cable, um, to a wood cable, so that they still remain fairly transparent, um, but it, 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 it has a more, uh, textural look, uh, that some of the, uh, a lot, a lot of the short residence, you know, type architecture have. Um, the other major move that we made was, uh, we changed all the, uh, the window moments, uh, to an off-white, you know, so we changed that from black to an off-white. So you can see that it really is a dramatic, um, change in tone, and, uh, we feel that, uh, we built this and, uh, you know, and made these, these changes. And I think, uh, you know, I think it really enhances the, the look of, of, uh, of the building. Uh, the other, uh, change that we made was, uh, in terms of signage, we've taken the signage, uh, vanilla off of the facade and just added, uh, now we're looking at, uh, A thirty five. So this would be looking from, uh, Route thirty five towards the front entrance. Uh, we've taken the, the vanilla lettering off and we've just, just added the logo. The logo is, uh, six by six, thirty six square feet, uh, so it's, uh, it's, it's less than we looked before, and, uh, we've added the, the monument sign, sign, uh, which incorporates a fountain, and more testimony will be, uh, on Tom Bauer. So, uh, and we've also, another, another thing that we've done too is we've changed the stone, we've blanked out the stone, uh, so it's, it's very soft and pastel, you know, the whole, the whole palette itself. I think that, uh, that's really, you know, will, will look really handsome on the, on the street. Again, just, uh, to reinforce, uh, the, the color palette, uh, this is the, uh, uh, A thirty six, looking into the, uh, pool remedy area, uh, and it, it zooms in a little bit on what you can see like in quarters, where we've also added, uh, that, that seafoam green, uh, color to certain areas within the building, the, you know, the separation between apartments, uh, again, inside corners will have that, that, uh, that color tone as well. Um, again, the, the palette is off-white and the, uh, with that, you have that, uh, that little, uh, soft, that gray tone, uh, to it. Uh, also, within the courtyard area, we changed the trellis to wood tone, uh, so that it, it helps, uh, again, create a little bit more detail accent in that area. Uh, and last but not least, um, the rendering that faces the, uh, the train station, the railroad, um, again, you know, those, uh, the, the interplay between, you know, the lighter stones, greens, the, uh, the new shades, and again, the, uh, the soft palette I think, uh, really went in there.
So, can you, uh, go back and first a bit of this on the? So looking south for Route thirty five, we've removed the vermellic sign that was over there. Till la.
Till la.
Where the stuff, we replaced it with just the starburst.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's over, over there.
Over there. So we have, we have one starburst?
So we added starburst here. We eliminated the vanilla sign over here, uh, further down of the building, you just, just, you know, where we have the stars.
And, um, the side of the building that's looking north, um, over by the train station, we removed the sign. The side of that side.
Uh, yes, there was, there was a sign, um, verbal sign that was, uh, going down, um, avenue.
There was a sign on the southwest corner, correct?
That's my.
Yeah, and is that sign still there?
No, that, that's something.
So, just so I'm clear, because there was a lot of discussion just now about signage, is, there's a, a, I'll call it the logo, that's now on the northwest side, as you're kind of coming down thirty five, and then if you're facing the main entry in the building, there's another one that was a sign, full sign, that's now just the logo on the blue panel, correct?
That's correct, so.
And then there'll be a monument sign that, that Tom Bauer will talk more about.
That's right, that's right. And this is the, uh, the sign as we come down.
Right, that's, that's the northwest view of it, and then there's one facing west that's at the enter.
That's correct.
Okay.
Where does that leave you with large variance for the issue?
They have two logos, and I think both logos, they can provide testimony as to how big they are, but I think they comply, and then there's a monument sign on the ground and Mr. Bauer will talk more about this size.
Wait till we hear your testimony.
Uh, as I, as I mentioned, the logo size is six by six, so that's thirty six square feet.
So it means variance.
They've got all the required.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bell?
It means variance for a logo.
Have we sworn in on what this is, by the way?
Uh, you know what, I don't think I swore, Ms. Bell.
I am.
Sorry, Ms. Bell.
I wasn't swearing.
Mr. Thomas, where are you testifying before the Board of Interior Cultures?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Okay.
Uh, I believe that's, uh, concludes my testimony.
Can you tell us how the sign is being, how it's on the building?
Uh, the logo itself will be, uh, uh, actually, uh, embedded, uh, mounted logo letter. I don't have any further questions for us.
Uh, one question, you know, see over the garage, I call them grates or portals, um, the, the awnings, were they on the prior plan?
Uh, no.
So that's an addition, right?
Yeah, that was an addition.
The seafoam green awnings, they cover?
Correct, that, that was a, a detail that we felt that would really help.
Yeah, I like that a lot, because those grates, obviously, we asked you to make them consistent, which you did, um, but there's a lot of, of that garage.
Right, and then the other thing we did too was, we also lightened up the walls themselves, the, uh, the off-white color as well. We really made an attempt to, I believe it was successful, we made that attempt to lighten up the building and, uh, you know, create a little improvement itself.
So, uh, I'm sure you're the right person to talk about samples, can you help us? Because I see four different color, or three grays, one white, and a little seafoam.
Yeah, so, um, the, the grays and the whites, you know, is, is, is an array of, of the possibility, like, you know, in terms of the, the off-white, the delray.
Are you looking for feedback from us, is my question?
Uh, yeah, well, you know, these are the tones of the greens that we're, that we're composing, and also the tones of the, the light grays and off-lights that we're proposing, and also a sample of.
Of the brick.
Of the type of stone.
Or stone.
So it kind of pulls that whole, you know, that whole palette.
So if anyone has thoughts on that, share it, at least, this will be the palette they work in. If you have any thoughts on the palette, just let them know, but otherwise, it'll be in that range for the building. I, obviously, I'll just state, I prefer the lighter grays rather than the medium gray. So that's out, and then the seafoam towards your, towards you, the darkest one, you're saying?
Yeah, I think it's a little.
So I just like, um, on the separation between the units, I think that should be a neutral, because you take your, when you're decorating, you're inside out and you're outside in, and, um, uh, seafoam green doesn't click my group. Uh, this is what we were, the mayor showed last, last time we were here in terms of colors. So, the awnings are great, the, the railings, the windows, the stone change is good. You notice on what you submitted to us in the plans, had horizontal siding, have you eliminated horizontal? Because I don't see any of that in the picture.
Um, there, there is a bit of it, um, within some of these test areas, um, you know, the wood, it's not predominant, you know, on the building, but, uh, predominant on the building will be more of the, um, more of. Prominent on the building will be more of the, more of the wood and batten. And what we call the fiber cement with canisters.
So why did you choose green?
We just felt that, that it has that, you know, that seafoam, you know.
Felt more blue.
More of a green.
No, I did not feel more.
Well, I didn't want to, you know, necessarily drive the design based upon, you know, a town road or a town color. But what we're trying to do is to create a palette that we felt that would work in town. That would embrace.
You know, I personally like the blue, the third one from the left here. It's less seafoamy, more of like a pale blue. And I think it ties in.
This one?
That one, yeah. I think that ties well with the grays. Because you're going to have a combination with the white, the gray, and that blue. I think it looks pretty good.
I think, not to testify from this point, I think he may have forgotten. They were talking about the color scheme. We looked at the colors of the street lamps, Ramella. And that was part of the motivation to look at seafoam green. We also had discussions about how we match the grasses that are seasonally pop up to try to carry that, that look that you get along the boardwalk. And the grasses that were planted around the building to make the complimentary landscape there. Those were some of the driving factors behind the color selection. We did talk about blue. We talked about a building that somebody did with a lot of blue accents. In another community, Sherwood, right, in the plains. And honestly, it looks terrible, you know. I'm talking about a building across the street from the port house in Hackensack. They wanted to go with blue to match the Hackensack ice hole color. The building's atrocious. We thought that this was of the more muted look. It was more keeping to the short.
I'd like, I personally would like the solid color. I guess the question, one question I'd ask is on the standing scene roof. Does that go to a pale gray rather than a seafoam green? I don't know what others feel.
That was one of my concerns was the roof.
We were considering the actual, that was like a very light silver green or orange.
Yeah, because I think.
There'd be too much green.
Yeah, I think the seafoam green is a great accent. But I think if you go with it on the standing scene roof, it's going to be too much seafoam.
So we were actually concerned that we were doing that color.
Yeah, I like the accent of it. I personally agree with you. I think a strong blue will get old quick. I think, I think a seafoam, you know, in the darker shades like that one, has an accent feature across the building, as you've demonstrated and rendered. I think it's good. I would certainly look towards a pale gray on the standing scene roof. Because I don't think you're going to be able to perfectly match the seafoam anyway. And then UV, they're going to age differently. So I think it's just going to be a problem long-term anyway.
We're not opposed to that. I don't know if you want to delegate the final color options in your board of professionals? Or?
I don't know if they have any better taste than anyone sitting there. I think a pale gray is fine. You guys can, you can work on that. I mean, I think what you presented is like a soft color palette, right? It's kind of a muted pale color. So I think if it stays in that color theme, I think it'll look great.
Yeah, I think this is a significant improvement.
I agree.
What we've all agreed on.
Well, I agree with you, Ms. Bell. I think that change in the window awnings to a white brightens it up. I think the stone selection lightened it up. I like the awnings over the grates, the grates being white. One thing we didn't spend a lot of time talking about, what I want to recognize, is we had concerns about the intersection of eighth and thirty-five and the roof line. And you didn't spend a lot of time talking about it. But I think that change is significant. So I think that change, I don't know which exhibit it is, that one. That change in that roof line. Because that eighth and thirty-five intersection in that corner of the building, it was really lost in the prior elevation. And I think it becomes the prominent corner view that you'd be looking for. So I think that really made a big difference.
It looks more symmetrical.
Yeah, it definitely looks balanced, for sure. But I also think it takes on that prominent, prominent view you want at the corner. I think you would want it as the owner of the building as well.
Is that still a balcony on that corner, lower on that corner? I see you made the full height windows there.
Yes.
So do you just made that pink bit a little smaller? Right, that's what it was.
Yeah, so in the original, it was a wraparound balcony.
Got it.
Now it's basically just a bump out balcony.
Yeah, I like that.
Good. Yeah. Again, it made it look less industrial.
I mean, you certainly understood the assignment and took our comments into consideration. And I really greatly appreciate that. My question is, we discussed branding last time. Was there any thought or change to the branding versus what we have right now?
In terms of the name?
Yeah.
I think the, I think the challenge with that is.
I'm being told by a client that you're leaning towards Ramella Delmar.
And for me, it's Russo's staple brand.
That's actually what I have a problem with, is that it's your brand. That's actually where my concern is. I'd like to separate, I'd rather see it separated from the developer's brand and align more with the community. It just... There are two things that I have hung up on, is the brand being too associated with the developer. And the starburst. Regarding the signage, I guess what's the mentality behind having a starburst?
Well, it's part of their brand. So, I mean, it's really a subject that I shouldn't really be speaking to.
Understand, yeah.
It's really important.
We'll come back to that first. Let's stay with architecture for now. And we can come back to what we think is actually, if you don't mind.
The stone is, I guess, is it lighter than the previous stone? The other stone was darker?
Yes.
To me, it still looks darker than, than the rendering looks. Like, the stone in person looks darker than the rendering looks.
Hopefully, it takes certain liberties with the lighting of that rendering. But I think, to your point, I think I would recommend that you look a little bit lighter in terms of the mix than what you see right here in terms of that stone. Because I agree with you, I think that's going to come across if you use that, darker than what you're rendering. And this seems to have a lot more of the creamy whites, the creamy beiges in what's being represented in here.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the key.
I mean, it's a, I don't know if it's simulated stone or not.
No, it's actually going to be a natural stone.
So I think you can find something, either on a lighter palette than what you have there. But I think what we've rendered accomplishes what we'd like to see. The problem is, it's a pretty picture. What we're actually going to see is what you bring forward here, and that's darker than what's here.
It's our intention, because we want it to look good as well.
Now, it certainly looks a lot better than our prior version, so thank you for that.
Yeah, one other thing just to note is that we've also added a line of sconces, also along the base. Sconce lighting.
And that's just, you like the wall mostly?
Yeah, it's just ambient lighting.
Ambient lighting.
It's not really, you know, for.
I have a question about the, again, just going back to the roof. We don't have the color here of the building, the light beige. I'm just concerned about how the gray roof is going to look next to the walls on the building. It just, it kind of just doesn't go.
There is no light beige.
What's that in the picture? What are the walls?
These are going to be the light gray colors, correct?
Uh, we have the off-whites and the light grays.
So this color right?
I mean, I'm sorry, like grays.
So this color that looks like beige is not going to be beige, just here?
Well, yeah.
It's going to be gray?
It's going to be those tones. Because in a rendering, depending upon how light hits it, what's reflecting off of it.
No, I just want that that would look, that would look up to me to have a gray roof and then you have beige light.
The gray roof will also have some, you know, a little bit of reactivity, you know, some color reactivity to it.
So the rendering is not showing us the gray, the true gray look on the roof. It's not going to be a sand, in other words, right now it looks like there's a, like a sandy look, with a very light sand. But what you're saying is it's not sand, it's going to be gray.
It's going to be a light, light gray and off-white.
It's just one thing.
We must not worry. Light colors.
Well, these, these are actually custom. These are, these are custom party colors. Not party, not necessarily party, they're other manufacturers. But, but, yeah, what we did was, we looked at a whole, like, panel tone, you know, sample chart, and started to pick multiple, you know, tones to get samples of. And actually, we just came in, we took a little time to, uh...
So this is not the dream collection from party?
Um, yes, this is, yes.
So if not, you'll match using the dream collection, what we see here.
Correct.
Just want to make sure that with the light gray roofs, there will be contrast between the facade and the light gray roofs. It's not going to be the same color where it just looks like.
It won't.
Institutional gray, okay. All right.
The layout of the, you improved the facade quite a bit. Has this affected any of the apartments' quantity, layout, number of bedrooms?
Uh, no. They're all the same.
Any other questions of the architect before we move on? No? Thank you.
I'd like to call Tom Bauer. I wish I could just say his name just by any of the... Sir Thomas Bauer, B-A-U-E-R. I just want to turn the board's attention to the last five pages of the package that we passed out. Starting with the exhibit, that's a little, the entry feature. If we could blow up the copy that's on the screen a little more. Mr. Bauer, did you have to prepare or prepare yourself?
I did.
Would you please describe what it shows?
Certainly, absolutely. So, guys, a few slides to, I will talk about the entry sign. But in reality, it's more than an entry sign. It's probably an entry feature that will provide a sense of place for residents and visitors arriving to the facility. Utilizing, as you heard previously, testimony, we had a fight with a grade change from the road up to our lobby. So utilizing that grade change, we've created a feature at the pool water. And as you can see in the image, we have a series of water falls that will cascade from the highest level down from here into a series of jetty rock pools. And that water will provide an aesthetic benefit as well as an auditory benefit as one drives by or walks into the facility as well. Surrounding the water feature are some native coastal landscape materials, including ornamental grasses, some colorful perennials, some low-profile evergreen material as well. And then, as a feature of this whole entry area, is what we'll call the monument sign. It's sitting above the water feature. It's a metal panel that will have pin mounted letters with backlit halo lighting for evening and nighttime ambiance. It says Ramella Delmar, and it has the logo. I will tell you that the size of this, and we'll see it in a moment, that it's a little bit larger than is currently permitted. We'll talk a little bit more about that. If we can go to the next slide, if you will. It'll be the same, same view of this from the opposite side, I should say, opposite view. So this is looking from the left side back toward the entry feature. You can see it's provided by the shade trees that will be on the central island. And again, it's about five feet of grade change in this view, from the left side down to the street to the right. Also in the foreground, you can see the seafoam street lamp. That is actually the same color and style as you have on the boardwalk and that blue rainbow outside as well, across the street. So that is the color that we are emulating throughout the property. Next slide, please. This is simply a plan view. Seventy-one is to the left, our lobby is to the right of this view. And you can see the entry circle coming out of the entry drive with a drop-off area, a couple of steps and handicap ramp just above that. And the island, as you can see, has a rectangular pool within it, a sign and a symbol hover. And then the water cascades from that element down to the street as it drops in grade into a series of pools. And then you can see various textures of light material, again, only of coastal type of light material. And then the last slide, I'll finish up just to show you, this is an elevation of that. Again, emphasizing the grade change from the right side of the street to the left. You can see on the water falls from here up top into the series of jetty rock pools. Again, these materials complement the architecture in color and texture. And the sign itself, as I mentioned, we are twelve feet wide and five feet high for the actual metal panel. Now, what we want is permitted by our ordinance is a sign that is actually eight feet high and four feet wide, which would indicate a vertical type of sign. We feel like, given the geometry and scale of the building, that a horizontal sign is much more appropriate here. We feel that this size is very much in scale with this space that is within. And so we would be asking for the, to allow that. I will tell you that the actual sign, the letters of Ramella, Delmar, and the logo, the cells, take up less than the thirty-two square feet that you would have in a four-by-eight sign that is permitted. So I hope you like it. I think it shows the commitments and quality of design and lifestyle of the coastal area that we're trying to create.
Sure. Question, I have a question.
Sure.
Do that street walk from thirty-five?
Yes.
How do they get?
Because there is a, if we go back to the plan, I think it shows the walkway. There's a walkway on the north side. You can see it jumping and walking over there in the distance. Maybe if you show the plan view? It's the, any plan view that shows the sidewalk. But there is a sidewalk on the north side of the, of that hallway. It's a plan view.
And there are steps on that side?
There are steps on that side. Handicap access to the lobby is via the rear of the building, not for this area, because of the grade change.
So there's no?
This side, in the base of the sidewalk, as you can see, it's being highlighted.
There's no ADA access on the front of the building?
There is not, no sir. Not until you arrive at the top via vehicle. There's a way, there's a way up by the drive. Yes, once you arrive by car at the front, there is an advance to the left as you highlight there. There's several steps in front of you, and there's an ADA ramp to the side.
So there is ADA access into the front of the, into the front?
Once you arrive to the top of the front, yes, yeah.
Is it fair to say, Tom, what you're saying is that that sidewalk that comes up from thirty-five to the level entry area is not ADA compliant?
That's correct.
But when you get vehicle-wise up to that top area, you're fully compliant at the walkways and into the building?
That's correct.
Thank you. Please.
Can you walk me through how a handicapped person would walk out of the building to Route Thirty-Five to possibly dine at Marina Grill? Where would they have to exit?
They would exit to the, to the, to the east, to the east, to West River Avenue. They would exit from there, and then continue along the sidewalk of Ten Detonations to thirty, to, uh... They would exit from there and then continue along the sidewalk of, of Tenth Avenue to, to Thirty, to Seventy-one.
And this is, I know there's a, there's an exit of the building at the corner of, um, Tenth and the east side of the building. There's an elevator that comes down there, so they'll be able to come down via elevator, ADA access and the exit out the building. And then the walk going down Tenth from Railroad Station to Route Thirty-Five is ADA compliant?
That's correct. It's actually a second lobby, the smaller lobby.
Smaller lobby, so they can come off of that, you're saying?
That's right.
Thank you.
Regarding the stamped concrete, we talked about this, that like strip up front, that round area.
Yeah.
Are there any ADA access concerns there with the stamped concrete? Meaning that there's, there's some change in elevation?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Very accessible, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we use it all.
So there's not, it's not like cobstones, it's...
No, it's actually a smoother surface and a great pavement that you could have on the side of the building.
Okay.
And then the front of the building has three steps, but there's an ADA ramp that works its way back up?
That's correct. Looking at the lobby doors, you'll probably see the ramp will be two blocks.
Landscape plant was strong, and you elevated it to the next level, so I appreciate that. I, the monument sign, I agree with you on, it looks better the way it is.
For the scales?
Yeah, like I, I actually appreciate that change and that deviation. Um, because I do believe the way that you designed it, even with water feature, I mean, really, really elevated.
I will say, I think the sign standards for redevelopment and the super redevelopment area were written primarily for buildings pressing on Main Street. And, you know, um, this is pressing on Thirty-Five, and while there are definitely pedestrians, it's not a main street like Main Street is. And, um, there are cars going much faster than there are on Main Street. So I think, um, the size of the sign is a little bit.
Yeah, for vehicle passing versus pedestrian passing. It's a good point, Miss Bell, thank you.
To the chair.
Yes, please.
Can you give us a little more detail as to the water feature? I understand what the dimensions of the sign are. It's literally a series of pools. The upper level where it contains the sign, then you've got the lower level. Can you give us some dimensions as to that? I've got, I've got the sign, the dimensions as to the water.
Okay, if we go back to the, uh...
Upper level, how many overheads?
Um, sorry, that, yeah. Or let's, let's go to the elevation here, I think that'll see the dimensions easier to do. So again, the sign itself, that's five feet high. The, the stone-faced wall that again is complementary to the stone sun building, that's about two feet high, say. And then the, the balance of that grade change is made up by natural jetty rocks that will be in various dimensions into a series of two, two of the lower pools that take us down to the side.
It's two feet at the back. So what's the dimensions of the front?
I was saying, two feet in the front before it hits the jetty rock.
Right.
It's relatively flush from back.
So it shows, it shows two foot on the back, so that's actually going to be lower flush, right? Because you're, you have a two-foot dimension on the back.
You got, yeah, hundred and forty-four.
I stand corrected, it's two feet in the back, so it's three feet in the front.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. And there'll be some type of...
About five feet total of grade.
And then you'll have some type of, um, you know, membrane or something under that, under the jetty rock?
It'll be aligned.
And a pump system that brings it back.
Recirculate the water.
Now, the stone on the water feature pond, I'll call it, is that matching? Is that the same stone that's going to be on the building?
Yes, it is.
It will be?
Yes, absolutely.
And is that a precast cap on top?
Yes. Again, to match some of the cast material that's on the building.
And the jetty stone will be in that same lighter range that we're pushing the architect for?
Well, the jetty rock will, honestly, will range, it will be jetty rock, that's...
So it'll be true jetty rock?
True jetty rock, just like we have the...
So it'll be dark colors throughout? What is part of the jetty?
Various grade zones, yes, yeah. The whole idea is to emulate the colors, we're trying to do a big share, right? That's the whole sense of place we're trying to create.
So dimensionally, how big is this first water feature pond, I'll call it?
In a square?
Yeah, is that like fifteen feet long, twenty feet long by ten feet wide?
I would say that's probably a good guess, maybe, uh, you know, eight, eight feet by twelve feet, thereabouts, put in that area.
Well, the sign itself is twelve.
Yes, right. Oh, the sign itself is six feet.
Yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be close to twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four feet, by maybe ten foot wide or something like that.
And the actual layout of it will depend upon this, this stone that will bring the site.
The jetty's coming.
It's artwork, it's kind of sculpture to deal with, you know?
Artwork.
Artwork, so then art in landscaping, how's that?
A little of Bauer in the art business now.
That's right, exactly.
What about planning for the...
Very important, very question. And the, as I mentioned, I think I mentioned, the, the letters themselves will be pin-mounted with a halo light behind them. So in the evening and the night, there will be water, like a fountain that's right behind the, the sign itself, that will be uplit. And there will be light, lights within the water highlighting the waterfall. So as you're driving by in the evening, the water will be glistening.
Good. Really well thought out.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the side, before I move to the landscape question?
If I get, if I get the dimensions on the front area, past the pool?
The jetty area.
The jetty area. There, there don't seem to be any, I'm just trying to get an idea of the purpose of the record.
I'm going to say that the, the, the surface water within the jetty is going to be about a hundred square feet at lower point. The upper will be two points, the upper will be small and then the lower will be larger by a hundred square feet.
Thank you. There was a change made, um, to switch to Halco Thornless Honey Locust. Can you help us understand where, like I think it's back near the loading area, but how many trees were switched to this species and why were they changed? I'm really, I'm not sure if somebody's here from the Shade Tree Commission, but we did want to understand that.
I think that was a Shade Tree Commission request.
Uh, no, the Halco Thornless Honey Locust was not a Shade Tree Commission request.
I thought there was, and I, we said...
No, we had made the request, um, to go to the Kentucky Coffee Tree. But for some reason, a new variety of tree was proposed, this Thornless Honey Locust.
Okay.
And I'm not sure where it's being proposed, why it's being proposed.
At the moment, but I believe it's on Railroad Avenue.
I, that's what I thought, Tom, I saw three near that loading area.
Yeah, and I do recall Kentucky Coffee Tree was pointed and recommended by Shade Tree Commission. Personally, not a fan of the tree. We have reviewed it, it hasn't done well in urban areas, it's somewhat urbanized, it's a traffic. Although, if you read the text, in the textbooks, it will tell you it does well, I disagree with that. And we find that Honey Locust does much better in a situation in areas like this, so that's why we suggested it. And I believe that the Shade Tree Commission is okay with that tree. I don't know if anyone's here from the Shade Tree Commission.
I think it was initial location.
Well, that was the question, but the honey, this Thornless Honey Locust wasn't recommended by the Shade Tree Commission.
I want to say you, uh, you have to...
I know, the question was where, and I think there's, I reviewed the plan, I saw three of them located back on Railroad Avenue near the loading dock, near the loading area. But I want to go back to your comment. So you're saying this Thornless Honey Locust is a good tree?
Perfect.
And you recommend it?
Yes.
You're not a fan of the Kentucky Coffee Tree?
That's correct.
Okay. So do you know where it's at?
I, I don't know as I say it, no, I say it, I do not know.
Do you want to pull out the plans?
Can you borrow that plan?
Jay, I did review the Shade Tree Commission's original letter compared to what their, the rules they're proposing. And the borough's two most recent, um, like, recommended plan view list and all of the trees, all of the shade trees on this.
On the current plan?
On the current plan, were either on the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five recommended tree or the shade tree recommended.
Okay, yeah, I think I saw them on the exhibit up top, here in the back, or by the loading zone.
That's what I thought, I saw three, I think, called out there. But they're all part of the twenty-five or twenty-four list?
Yes.
That's fine, and that's all we need to... Um, is there any other landscape lighting, Tom? Going to be any uplights on trees or anything in the drop-off area?
We have not need for any additional lighting at this point in time. There is obviously adequate street lighting, um, but at this point in time, we have not recommended any additional lighting.
Any other questions of the landscape architect? No? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I call on Doug Martels? Can you say your name, just wanted to ask a question?
Doug Martels, B-A-R-T-E-L-S. Russo, I believe, yeah.
Mr. Martels, can you, uh, give us some information regarding, uh, parking, you know, it's...
Our people will be assigned to residents, residents can be assigned to see, they have registered, registered vehicles. And they would be assigned spaces for vehicles that pay register.
And I think we had some testimony earlier about the candy spaces are all being assigned to see, is that what you want?
That is right. That is right.
And can you offer testimony about the trash pickup, how that's a key word, you know?
There is, there is a trash storage room, which was previously testified to, but in the, in the garage. Um, there is actually a, um, there are chutes that come from the upper floors. And there is an additional room with that, like, trash's ignition comes down the chute. And there's a storage room closer to the rear, which is being shown here at the approximately center of the, um, east side, over there. And there is a door that comes out from there, so the trash staff, maybe the building staff can burn the trash out at time of connection.
And because it's a private mall, you're totally controlled on the location to be there, and how often are you going to be there?
Correct, so it could be two times a week, maybe three times a week, or...
And you're getting coordinated, so that trucks will pull up, pick up the trash, the trash will come out with their motor. The dumpsters and the garbage cans will go back to the place, so that they're not sitting out there.
Correct.
And that'll be like a two-yard container?
Okay.
So are the response ones?
Two, yes, they are typically two-yard roll-up containers.
So they could be rolled in or rolled out?
Correct, rolled, yep. Rolled out, picked.
And will the applicant agree to work with the fire official to respect the location for sand, pipes, hydrants, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I go back to the garage? How is the access controlled, is there a roll-up gate?
Yes, um, I don't know that we've decided on the exact type of door at this point, but, um, we usually have, well, we had roll-up doors, yes.
Like a roll-up grill or solid?
That's what made the difference, yes.
But it'll be five access for tentative?
Correct. All doors with five access.
Regarding the EV charger installs, I know there was a three-phase, it goes in three phases. Can you walk me through those three phases? Also, what level chargers will be used and, um, what amperage draw that each charger will have?
There are level two chargers.
Okay, so fifties?
And not a hundred percent certain on the amperage draw. They are level two chargers and then the phase A is one-third, one-third, one-third at CO, three years later, six years, or six years from CO.
So for a level two, you're roughly going to be fifty amps times how many?
Thought I would call it period forty.
Yeah, I think it's going to be thirty to, thirty to fifty somewhere in there. How many level two chargers are going to be installed by the time it's done?
All told, I don't have that many.
So actually, what I'm trying to get at is where I have a concern is by the time you hit the second or third phase, now, have there been load calculations that have been done to ensure that by the time you hit the second or third phase in, that we're not sitting back here again and you're like, hey, I need another transformer, right? Has, has that all been taken into consideration?
Whole loads have been calculated.
I think we do have a little serve on our, um, do you see something about, say, September twenty?
Of what year?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, I think we got updated.
I, we'll get it up there. We just, we've had, got some limited conversations, frankly, in case, you know, because getting money more comfortable is a big, it's been a moment for them. And getting much information out of them too late has been a difficult, frankly, but we have provided them load letters for the building. And as I said, the full build out of chargers.
So as a condition of the application, you'll get little serve letters from electric, gas and water and sewer?
Yes.
The chair, while, while you're on that, can you discuss briefly the location of, are there going to be generators in case of power failure at the site?
There will be generators.
Location of that is a location there condition.
Gas or diesel? On the roof. Um, and the condenser and the chimney as well.
Natural gas or diesel?
The generator?
Yes.
The, uh, natural gas.
Thank you. Um, for all of the units, any separate meter?
For what?
For water and, where, where electric and gas?
All three.
Maybe sub-meter or sub?
Sub, water is sub-meter. Electric and gas are meter.
Individual meters.
Right.
So where are those meters going to be located? That may be for your architect, I'm not sure.
So...
You've got a hundred and ninety-seven meter target.
Gas meters are definitely inside JC PNL. We've had experience where they will not allow that. That is what we're trying to do, is have them inside.
So if they don't allow, where are you putting?
It would be, um, likely on the railroad outside.
So are you willing to make a condition of the application, if you end up having to put them outside, that you'll screen those?
I would love to, I'm not certain how we'd be able to do that, given where they are.
I'm not even sure you have adequate wall space to be able to set those meters. I know you've racked those three high.
Correct. So, I, I mean, the, the location I would best allow for some sort of screen would really be if they were on the gate at the other side of the building, on that north corner.
No, absolutely not, absolutely not.
As I said, that was not my intention, but actually, in terms of a screen, that's, there's just, there's limited space to a screen, a long rail道.
Is it possible to put them in the traction?
I was going to say...
Yeah, and that output, that would be the location, yeah, I, I know, layout-wise, I would fit there, but that would be the location of course.
Mr. Chairman, if you could say something like that, we're professionals, so try and like that.
And our preference is to put them in that loading area if you have to bring them outside, which you like a lot.
Yeah, and we have proposed to JC PNL to have externally entered room that they may have access to, to try to get them inside as a yard by.
And since the owner's rep stepped up to the table, we might as well get into the discussion. Chris had brought up, uh, the logo and Vermela Belmar as a naming convention. How committed is Russo to that name and is there any flexibility for that?
Let me get to the name and the branding.
My, my concern is having it, the branding of the building being aligned with the branding of the development firm. Because with one quick swipe of a, of a private equity fund ordinance, check, you're selling it and Russo is going to exist. So that's why I kind of would like to see a separation. I don't think the, the branding aligns with the borough in the first place. But what makes matters worse and is a bigger concern for me is having that branding aligning with the development, with the firm itself.
If I could address that for a moment?
Yeah.
You feel, I'm sure you've seen other products about Russo and all of those. If you have a quick Google search, we'll show you. If you haven't, the quick Google search will show you. Everyone that I've ever asked, there's not large letters on the side of the building, it says borough. This building originally had two such signs, and the virgin had a clear, and took those signs off. That may not have felt like a big ask to you, but to us, that was a very big ask and we think of. The monument sign is the only sign that's allowed to be known on it. The starburst logo we think is pretty enough was, I think it's attractive, we think it's probably the size for the scale of the building. Russo has developed a reputation for building first class buildings throughout the state of New Jersey. It is a luxury product. I've worked with them for about three and a half years, and every time I spoke with them, they'd say, the same thing I hear is, we built own, we don't build to sell. Whether it's for the long haul or a public company, there is no plan to sell this to some, those same investor trusts. That's not, this is not going to become an Adeline project, a total project. It'd be a non-Ruso development project. We don't sell what they don't, keep what they don't. So they're committed to bringing this response forward.
We say that now, but we, we say, we say that now, and I understand the branding is acceptable in other, other towns and municipalities. You know, this is our town and our municipality, and that's actually one of my sticking points is, I'd really like, you know, take a closer look at the branding, align it better with the borough. And move it away from the alignment of the brand of development firm. And make it a little bit more innocuous, I guess, like a, a little bit where it kind of stands on its own. Appreciate that consideration.
Let me, let me just throw it out there, I'm not sure how others feel about this. You know, to have concerns, voice it. I know Chris, personally, um, I feel like they've made a positive move because we were all offended by how large that sign was.
A hundred percent.
When we first came here. We're the ones, if you remember correctly, had suggested potentially retaining the logo, um, as part of the compromise, I'll call it, in the signage. I'm personally not offended by the name, um, I think the monument sign looks great. So I'm just speaking for myself, not necessarily anyone else on the board, but for me, I think the changes that they've made. Making it look less like a Marriott that you drive across the bridge was a big step, so I feel good about it, but I don't know, I don't want to speak for others.
I concur with you.
And if others have, you know, aligned with Chris and have concerns, please voice it, but, um, I, I know, I feel like they've made some real good progress on that. I think we're always offended by how the logo is. Any other questions for the owner before we move on to engineering?
Yep.
Uh, me and Mr. Frig, uh, that provide the planning, that's the, uh, Mr. Bartels is an answer, yeah, questions are.
So we don't have anyone from Dynamic here?
Uh, Mr. Frig, Mr. Frig is right.
Yeah.
Who would be responsible for where you are this conference?
Yeah, please.
Where, where you are with regard to underground removal of holes or this, I know we didn't have a, a firm answer on that last time.
Similar answer, so JCPL is getting planned, we're approval is a, an important first step for JCPL's eyes for a viable project. That's their words, not mine. So we have presented information to them. We presented a plan to show the relocation of the poles that are running along the, um, west side.
Let's, let's discuss what plan you submitted then, and then get some feedback from the board members.
Plan to take poles from the west side of, of West Railroad Avenue to the east side of West Railroad Avenue. That would run within the road, uh, the right way of West Railroad Avenue from ten to eight.
The plan was to take them down and go underground, is that what you had?
To move, relocate poles from the west side of West Railroad Avenue to the east side of West Railroad Avenue.
Where are you, the transition property?
Correct, the span where this, these, we would introduce an island in the middle of the span of spaces that are there today. And add one more at the end so that the count doesn't change. And that, so there would be a pole at the corner, a pole at the middle, a pole at the far right, and then continue down to the intersection.
So it's not an elimination of pole environment, placing things underground, it's simply moving it further off of the top.
Correct, service to the building would be by pole drop.
And is that, that line feeding anything other than your property?
A line on, along the side. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent certain what feeds on the other side of the road. But I don't believe there's any other services coming off of the line between that and, between that.
So it's all through yours?
Within that stretch, I believe, so yes.
And does, does the stretch go beyond that to feed anything north or south of your property? Maybe that's a question for the engineer.
Yeah, I don't know for certain, I know when the, the line reaches the corner of railroad and it, it, it actually sort of shoots off to the, um, the, um, northeast direction. But I don't know the way to service you that.
Probably through, feeding that transit station. Probably going to that, that transit box. Actually, while you're up here, a question for you on the rentals, are they going to be annual or seasonal?
You, your leases?
Are you comfortable with a deed restriction that would restrict them to the annuals?
Meaning annual leases?
Annual leases, yes.
That's, that's what, that's what they will.
My concern is there's a change in ownership and then next thing you know, I know you guys are never, ever going to sell and only tell the day that everybody dies, but. Is there a change in ownership? And I know that's your attention, there becomes the change in ownership and then next thing you know, we're stuck with. Short term leases.
I, I, I can only say that we would abide by whatever, um, the current ordinances are with respect to leasing, I don't know if we have a short term rental provision. Just not like, you know, the M and Bs or something like that, if that's what you're worried about, that this is a, something like that. But the, the intention here is that these are going to be, you know, leases, you know, not going to be some of the short term rifles, they're not, they're not doing it.
And, and we don't, we don't allow a lease painted like sub lettings, that's also not something that's permitted.
And I'm not so much worried about Russo Development, I'm worried about preventing the, the future, right? That's where I'm really actually worried about, I'm worried about, you know, backing up branding, right? You know, I, having, I'm not worried about Russo, I'm worried about disconnecting, um, but also if there's a change in ownership down, down the road. Which I know you say, no, there will be no change ownership, which it's hard to believe, but hey, if there's a change ownership down the road, does another investor come in? Decide that, you know what, I can extract more value from a short term rental. And then us as a borough is kind of backstabbing, we have to put something in place or at that time. Whereas if we can right out of the gate have a deed restriction, because there's very going to be a deed restriction for coe units, can we have a deed restriction restricting, um, to annual rentals?
My, my concern is that that becomes an undue part of the, of the order of property. You may have somebody in town that gets the rights someplace for three months while their house is there. There's six months, they're doing a project, they don't want to stay in town, this is where they want to go. I don't think it's fair to tell ownership that they can't ever do a lease that's less than a year. But I think it's, you know, moves up to a pension of people's property rights. And, and I'm just not sure what the concern is, are you, or is someone going to penalize you for a week at a time or a week?
Just don't want anything less than twelve months, that's what, you know, anything less than twelve months is not somebody's home, you know, twelve months and longer is somebody's home.
We frequently have staggered leases that get really out of the gate so that you don't get a whole building that's leased. And then come October or next year, boom, now it is potentially off lease. So there, there are occasions where ten month leases plus like fourteen month leases, you call them leases, so that there's a staggering of leases and, and loans.
And I'm okay with staggering, I understand strategy, you can do it twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and so on.
What would be the shortest amount of a staggered lease?
Probably ten months.
Okay, because what I'm going to say is, I don't, I'm not going to approve anything less than a ten month. If there's a possibility that somebody could rent for three months or four months, you don't have my vote. We do not want seasonal rentals, not a hundred and ninety-eight more. All right, we've been through this in Bellmar, and we're not going to do it again, okay? I know, you know, you have all the rights in the world, but I do not want to see apartments that we approve being used for seasonal rentals. End of story. I don't know if anybody agrees with you, but.
I'm even not even comfortable with ten, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm really not comfortable with anything less than twelve.
I'd give them ten, but, you know.
I mean, there's also in New Jersey, tenancy rates are different for less than twelve months versus twelve months.
Because I can see what's going to happen potentially in the future. We're going to have many apartments in Bellmar. Market's going to get very crowded, there's going to be a lot of vacancies, and somebody's going to come up, maybe not you, but some other developer's going to come up with the right idea of just renting for the season. You know, and we'll get, we'll get around that, we've been through that. We're not doing that anymore.
We've made great strides in my way from it.
You know, that's, that's the message for every developer.
Well, I would say we do not want to rein force the blame to a limit beyond what the road comes at with respect to rental terms.
We'll change the goal from now.
I mean, maybe that's our next step, that's it, yeah, maybe that's, Bud, Budmer and Council.
Maybe it is, maybe, maybe that's the answer. I'm just like, that, that's too much of a restriction, inability to manage. And, and, just think about people you know renovating their homes, they need a place to live for six months, nine months while they're doing renovations.
Nope.
This is a perfect opportunity for that.
Absolutely not, I'm, I'm not buying you selling twelve months.
We disagree on this point and go on to.
I can also tell you from personal experience, I lost my house in a fire. And I had to find a rental in town, my kids in school and going to work. And I, I was one of those people that needed that short term lease. And I needed something for, for, you know, a period of three or four months, and I moved around between a couple properties. It happens, quite frankly, I agree with the concern of we don't want to find ourselves in a place where we go back to seasonal rentals, Mayor, if I could agree more. Um, I think we just got to be careful of what kind of restrictions we put here because we have other properties in town that have no restrictions whatsoever. That have moved through approval process. I think if we want to do something, I think we propose to bring this to the Mayor and Council to take action over a broader basis. To control and bully seasonal rentals, but I think it's bigger than just this one property.
But I think we have to keep in mind that with respect, this is a hundred and ninety-eight units. Do you know how many blocks of Bellmar, if we start counting up homes? That you need to count for a hundred and ninety-eight homes? This is a huge development. So I, I agree with, you know, you have the concern, but, but what I'm saying is if you're one of those people who need a three month rental, you're not going to do it here. Basically, you have to find, this is huge, a hundred and ninety-eight units? How many blocks in town does that take? How many, how many houses are on a block? Six? You know, so, you know, divide six into a hundred and ninety-eight, that's how many blocks of Bellmar you're, you're getting, basically, in this, in this development. And we've made a lot of accommodations to let this go.
I have a compromise.
We're not going to, we're not going to, I'm telling you right now, we're not going to have less than a ten month rental here.
I, I have a compromise.
I'm not willing to compromise, but I'll listen.
There you go. There's a compromise right there. So if we can agree that there would be no lease terms for any minutes to less than six months. And then no more than ten percent maximum of the building would be, uh, available for six months.
Six months is not, no, absolutely not, let's go the other way, put eighteen months then. You know, I mean, we're going to go one way, we're going the other way.
I've offered you.
How about we compromise to twelve?
We, we can, we can agree to this, we can agree to disagree on that.
Yeah, so repeat that, six months and ten percent?
Six months would be the shortest term that the landlord will offer inside. And a maximum of ten percent of the minutes of the building, obviously they're not, um, affordable units, so we've got, yeah. Twenty affordable units, a hundred and ninety minutes of, seventeen units max would be available for a minimum of six months. So you could accommodate up to seventeen people, seventeen families that need a short term, they'll hold six months. No lessons. Lessons.
No lessons.
No lessons. I'm going to have.
Go ahead, whisper me.
You want it?
I wasn't, if you would, I appreciate it, thank you.
So I'm just, where the testimony, you, true, so true, close to the truth?
I do.
State your names, by your last name.
My name is Christopher Minx, I'm the chief legal officer and general counsel for Russo Development. I've been at the prior hearing, I'm here, I truly appreciate all of your, your input and your suggestions.
Last name?
Excuse me, Christopher Minx, M I N K S. Just to touch on what Mark was trying to express rather than play telephone, telephone. Consistent with our loan terms, with pretty much every commercial multifamily loan that I've overseen over the last fifteen years of being at Al in Russo. We are precluded from having short term rentals that you're concerned about, we could not without breaching our loans. And these are not loans that are going to be flesh and a hand, and then we, you know, we, we build with equity, but we finance a stabilized property as any large developer will. Those loans will preclude us from having short term seasonal rentals, that is not a concern that you need worry about, we cannot do that. No one in this space would be able to get away with that. Number two, we have to have great flexibility in our lease management, not our initial lease up. Our initial lease ups are typically twelve month terms, but on lease renewal and lease management and vacancy management and, and all, everything that goes along with it. Down to the minutia of move ins and move outs and just logistics, but certainly from the economic point of view, we have to be able to balance our lease portfolio. We can't say it's only going to be twelve, thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, whatever, we have to have the shorter term lease, we have to have the longer term lease as an option. Those variables are typically ten, twelve, fourteen, maybe that's it, maybe there are like a few problems. And that also comes with an associated price point. You may pay a little less for a longer term, you may pay a little more for a shorter term, but they're not seasonal leases. So what our loan product permits is a ten percent, uh, quantity of leases that can be less than twelve month terms. And they typically do not permit less than six month terms. That's the, that was not a, just a, hey, let's propose this, that was taken directly from what we are able to do and what flexibility our lenders give us. Is yet, our occupancy is critical to our success. We don't maximize rents, we maximize occupancy. And that includes increasing rents when they're right to be increased and decreasing rents when they're right to decrease in order to maintain that high occupancy. And we're very, very proud, both to speak to your comment about our branding. We've built this branding since pretty much the day I started in, in the company, it's not my responsibility nor am I to get the credit for it. But over the last fourteen, fifteen years of being with Russo, we've built the Vermella brand. And it is the paramount principal brand of multi-family product in the state of New Jersey today. And candidly, most towns, let's say pat on the back, but most towns want us to brand our buildings Vermella. And whether it's Vermella Bellmar or perhaps Vermella Mar or, uh, you know, something that may, you know, be a variation on that. The Vermella brand is key to our success. It's honestly, I, I think, a, a very good product for you to have in Bellmar as opposed to a generic nondescript product. And, uh, it's something that we're just extraordinarily proud of. But I, I, I hope that gives you some context as to where we're coming from. We are not looking to short term rental these, the management alone to short term rental this building would be a nightmare. Not what we're in the business of doing, we have our own property management team that will self manage this building. But it is a long term, conventional leased product where we're having. is a long-term conventional leased product, where we're having permanent residents occupy us. And we do have preclusions against subletting, because we are very tight on our background searches, to the extent the state allows us. We are very tight on managing occupancy, companies and buildings in the building, security is very high, and all of that speaks to the result of, of the brand that we achieve. So with all due respect, I understand where you're coming from, but we, we strongly disagree on the branding issue, and we would really ask for the same courtesy we've gotten in virtually every other community with regard to having some flexibility.
So, the response for the leasing is the concern isn't Russo, the concern is not Russo. The concern is another investor comes, buys the property, or buys the entire whole-hop portfolio, and changes the strategy. So the concern actually is not Russo, or the covenants associated with your funding. The concern is down the road, is another investor comes in, Russo sells it, and then they have a different strategy, and next thing you know, we end up with a hundred and ninety-eight, we end up with essentially a frat house on Route thirty-five.
No one's gonna buy this product. The cost of this, it would cost for an investor to come in and invest in this building. No one is gonna do that, to convert it into a rooming for, or a boarding unit.
Of course.
That's absurd. No one's gonna do it to convert it into weekly rentals, because the level of quality and finish in this building, it just violates that. It would be the most high-end hotel on the planet that you can imagine. I would imagine it has strict regulations with respect to hotel occupancy. It would also not qualify under our DCA approvals, because it's not being, it's a multifamily dwelling, but it's not, it's not a hotel, so that would have to be complete relicensing of the, of the building. And moreover, it, it's, you know, you've heard that we don't sell property. I've sold three buildings in fifteen years in the Russo portfolio, multifamily buildings.
So that's one every five years? So you're, so that's one every five years, so if we're gonna kind of break that down, there's a chance that in five years from now, this building does get sold to another investor? Using your example?
It's, it's a study, we're a generational company, so it's, it's, it's second generation of Belmar.
I think also, I, I appreciate that you're saying we don't need to worry about the short-term rentals, that's, that's, you know, not what we do. But also, if that's not what we do, then why is there opposition to the restriction?
I, I will put, I, I will not agree with the restriction generally. I mean, every person will be agreeing to the de-restriction that we have to file for multiple, for affordable housing, that's because we're a willing affordable housing participant. Incumbering my title for the sake of a what-if is not something I'm in the business of doing, it's not something I wanna do, it's not something I wanna, you know, burden my client's asset with. At the same time, respectfully, I think we're going far afield of the purview of the planning board in managing, you know, the, the actual lease terms. We're adhering and willing to adhere to whatever the municipal ordinance says. We're certainly not gonna pluck those or try to challenge something that may preclude a multifamily dwelling such as this from being short-term seasonal rentals. Again, not our intention. I think probably sound law for you to consider that, if that is a concern that you have, but you do have other multifamily properties in town, and are they similarly de-restricted? If they're not, then that's a real selective enforcement against my client's product, and it's something that I'm really not comfortable doing in that context.
So Doug, can you talk about our jurisdiction?
What was regarding that de-restruction? This is a need property in Belmar, and we can't compare it with other single-family or, I mean, we're trying to think of the largest multifamily dwelling we have, I mean, I'm thinking of Bevill, Bevill property. But with regard to concerns that we have, I think the board has greater jurisdiction where we're building things for the essence of a certain roof, or the essence of, and I mean, not necessarily tying length of term into some of the other various that you're seeing, but because of the uniqueness of this property, one of the things that you, one of the standards that you're going to have to meet regarding the bare insurance, not necessarily as to need, but as to benefits to the community as a whole, not just to the property.
I understand the criteria.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to teach you about, I'm sure you can teach me. But I'm saying, on this, on the C2 standards, I think it opens up a lot more jurisdiction than, than we may disagree, and I'd have a conversation over the longevity of this property as a developer. But I, I think the board has the right, particularly what was, what has been expressed by the Mayor, in terms of the character of this community as to what it is now, how we've gotten there over, say, maybe, a thirty-year process. And, and again, I don't, I don't wanna belabor, but what, what the Ocean Avenue used to look like thirty years ago, and what it looks like now is night and day. And continuing with regard to that, there is a genuine concern if we get back into a, and I understand the economics of those types of things, if we get back to seasonal rental, now where we, we're, you know, we're limited in a certain section of the town where that's going to happen and we can accommodate it, I don't think the borough could accommodate that, but it's sad. So I think it's a legitimate concern for the town.
I'm not questioning the legitimacy of the concern, I'm just questioning.
I'm going back to the jurisdiction question.
And I agree, I understand you're going back to the jurisdiction question, and again, we can have a philosophical debate over whether or not we give the jurisdiction, I'm pretty convinced it's not.
Not at the hour and the rate you got, you got one.
But that said, obviously, look, I could, I could argue that the, the notion of aesthetics and, and, you know, seafoam grain is what the dark grain is outside of the jurisdiction, but we're not that party, we're, we're trying to cooperate. You, you acknowledge that we heard from the last hearing what your concerns were, and we addressed them, lots of that, and we took them seriously, and we spent great effort and, and time and money to make sure that we addressed them accurately for you. I just think this is one where we do have other multifamily properties, while this is a need project, simply because it is a Vermella product that we're proposing, and it will be a need product, and one that I would dare say not be matched by others in the community. It nevertheless is a multifamily product, and to oppose the de-restriction requirement on this product and not other multifamily products, whether they're sixteen units or sixty units, or six hundred, because that's forbidden, and we don't want that volume, is, is, I think, inappropriate. I think it calls out my client's asset and imposes a burden on it that is not shared by similar properties, again, multifamily properties. So I would, I would suggest, I don't think that's the right route, and, you know, I'll take it back to, to management, if that's the board's decision to condition this application, or impose that as a condition, we'll have to consider it with management. Thus far, in my brief communication and in hot texting back and forth with our principal, Edward Russo, the principal, not a lot of people, it's Ed Russo, we really believe that the notion of de-restriction is someone's coming in, not something we've ever agreed to, but we do recognize that we're okay with the need of addition of the resolution, that seasonal rentals will be precluded. That's, we, that's not in the mix, you know, in the seasonal rental. This is not a summer property, it's not to manage by that as a summer.
To go back to the proposed compromise, about the six months, you referred to the fact that you have financial restrictions based on that. Would you be willing to share that piece of financial data restriction with the board, so that we can?
We don't have financing on this property. There's no financing on this property at this town. I'm telling you, that is a typical financial limitation that a lender would impose on us, except maximum, another example, they said a maximum percentage of units that can be leased in blocks, for example, corporate leasing, which is very common in multifamily, lenders don't like that. So they set a cap on the amount that can be used in blocks. They often set a cap on the amount of leases that we can lease to our own personnel. So we're not juicing, you know, the revenues in order to make it that service coverage ratio may, you know, or get, you know, a lease from some guarantee that we may have other product. So there's, all those financial mechanisms are critical to them, so they wanna know that not only is the unit, are the units leased, is it generating the revenue that they expected to generate, but is it generating the revenue from reliable leases that are not friends and family, or a bunch of seasonal leases? So we've got a three-month window, a three-month look back, and we can tell, look, we're ninety-five percent leased, and then meanwhile, twenty percent of it is seasonal, and it, it, immediately outside that window, we have no longer than ninety-five percent leased. That would violate our lease covenants. So there could be any number of covenants, but typically, they're not, we preclude seasonal or short-term leases, they cap the amount that we can do as to less than twelve, and our experience has been that no lenders allow us to do terms less than six. So we're fine with the condition in the resolution, mirroring similar types of parameters to give you comfort, but that's not only not our intention, but it would also be a violation of the approval of someone else, maybe, and said, hey, we're just gonna do what we wanna do.
So, the compromise was not less than six months and not more than ten percent?
No more than ten percent leases would be less than twelve-month terms, and no term would be less than six months, six months. So, if you follow.
Okay. So ten percent was your cap on anything less than twelve?
Correct.
And at no point, at no time, will anything be less than six months?
Correct.
As a condition of the application?
Yes, we would agree.
Are you agree that in that statement, that the six months isn't necessarily seasonal or something? You're still not, you're not gonna rent seasonally. Six months could be, you know, someone is, is on a twelve-month lease, and knows their job is moving in six months, and if they only signed it six months.
That's, that's the most typical scenario, either there's a fire victim, or there's someone that's building their house, or someone that will be displaced and negotiates a short-term.
So, my point is, you're not gonna advertise a six-month lease, starting from May to go to September, or whatever it's.
I hear you, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna bridge the se, the summer season and, and have somebody just pay, you know, for, for a month and a half on each side.
Six-month leases would be more of a special circumstance.
I mean, look, the summer season, the summer season's a ten-week season, right? I mean, the summer season, you know, see where the local soccer, but typically, a summer rental season is a ten-week, I own property a lot of the time, we have rentals I, I manage myself, because I'm an idiot. But, you know, you're typically looking at that ten-week rental season. It, it, it would be, you know, bizarre, we certainly won't advertise that type of an alternative.
The point of my question was, six months, if it's, you know, agreeable with the board, and I'm not saying it is, in, in that condition, it's also that it's not going to be a six-month seasonal, it's gonna be six months.
The only reason, the only hesitation I have is, I don't know how I can guarantee that you start a lease in May, and it ends in May, and you're that employee that has a relocation opportunity, technically, it's gonna be.
Well, there's probably no way to enforce it either, or look at it.
I hear you, but put it this way, it's not our intention, we wouldn't advertise it, we wouldn't offer it as a, you know.
Maybe that's the piece we add to the condition, that you won't advertise for a six-month short-term.
Seasonal.
It's, I hear what he's saying, he's saying he doesn't want us going out and advertising and saying, hey, you like Belmar? Lease it from, you know, May to October. I hear exactly what he's saying.
Because I, I think you're talking about special circumstances.
Sure.
Whether it's somebody like me that had a fire, somebody's got a job delay, whatever it might be, it's gonna be some type of an extension, not somebody, or somebody that walks in, but you're not advertising that. It's, you know what, I'm in a jam, can I get a six-month lease? Not advertised, but.
I think that's fair, I think that's fair. We wouldn't advertise six months.
I'm trying to put too little ground here.
No, I appreciate that, I said once, and I put my job workforce, and they call me a vigilante.
I know, that's the attorney.
You go Hayward.
Attorneys are always worse.
Attorneys are the worst, right?
They're like the counsel, they're worse.
These units aren't furnished, right? No, no, and that's the other thing, is what I, what I was getting at, is that they're not, it's not a hotel staying, you know, these, these are not short-term stay-at-martins, these are vacant apartments. The odds of somebody moving in, that's a very good point, in May, and staying for, you know, six months, and flourishing a place and then failing, because they wanted to be at Belmar in the summer, it's a very expensive prospect.
So are we willing to make that a condition of that?
We'll, we'll put lots of loss, not statutory language, but lots of loss in council and board.
But I wanna make sure you're comfortable with not advertising for a six-month term.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work something.
I have, I have faith that we can get one, which we hear.
Now, as to how we put the loss, council will work through that, if that's acceptable to.
And if, if others still aren't comfortable with it, you have the right of vote, so that is the best we're gonna get, based on over-tested proof, so.
You will, you will praise that as a positive to put that in?
Definitely. We're, we're not seeking one. We've got backdoor seasonal.
So while we have you up regarding the branding, I know you guys are very proud of the Vermella branding, after my comments from the last meeting, did anybody actually vote for the Urban Dictionary?
No, we took your, your word.
You took my word, or? I mean, do we wanna read it for the record, or?
I, I read it, Vermella, Vermella means, loosely, means red in Portuguese.
Yeah.
And that was where it was born. It was, you know. Frankly, I don't put a whole bloodstock in the Urban Dictionary.
I don't either, but it's out there, and there is, there is a slang, there is a slang terminology associated with it. There's an off-color slang terminology associated with it.
Not, not familiar with it, nor, these are really good movies, and a lot of our, our faith and our loyalty for our brand. Nor has it, candidly, has it come up in many, many years of using it, so.
Maybe not every borough does a diligence.
Candidly, like I said, most boroughs ask us, would you brand this building Vermella? Or, we want it to be a condition of the approval, but this will be a Vermella product. And that's just not, you know, talking, that's, that's from first-hand experience, I think that most of our lead charities have left for, for these. I'm just getting tired, so we're bringing, really more than others.
I just want somebody to, to read it, read it out.
Okay, I'll look at it, Chris, 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 we'll talk about it, and, but I'd rather that it stay out the record at this point, if it's as interesting as you suggest.
All right, any other questions of ownership?
I've got some parking assignment questions.
Sure.
So, can you work through with the stack parking?
Actually, I kinda like.
The, the tandem parking, so, we are significantly under our parking count, and I think it's been noted by the record that that's been how it was approved with the TJ action. But we also have, you know, forty EV spaces, so if you, you know, take two hundred and fifty-two unit, two hundred, two hundred and two spaces, I, I wanna make sure of a couple things. One is the tandem spaces. Are they assigned specifically to only three-bedroom apartments?
Three or two-bedrooms.
Three or two-bedroom apartments, okay, so what happens if that three-bedroom or two-bedroom apartment has one EV car and one regular?
EV spaces are, can be used to charge, they don't necessarily stay there, they don't get assigned specifically to an EV space.
So, in the two hundred and fifty-two spaces that are in here, is that including the, I believe it's forty, EV?
Yes.
Okay. Are you taking any EV credits for parking spaces, or is that straight two hundred and fifty-two?
That's a real two hundred and fifty-two.
Real two hundred and fifty-two spaces. So you didn't really answer my question, so now we go to, we really have two hundred and twelve non-EV parking spaces, okay? You have a hundred and ninety-eight units, you're gonna have way more than two hundred and twelve cars in this building. What happens when you get to that point? And do you let people, do you assign an EV space to a non-EV car?
Sure.
Would be my first question.
Has not crossed that, that bridge, but I certainly, certainly if an EV would be assigned to a non-EV space, it would be not an EV, assigned to EVs.
Can I ask a related question? Because of the, the one-third, 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 two-thirds of those at least advocate will be regular spaces. They may be, you know, you may pre-wire them, but you're not, you're not necessarily wiring them up. So, they're available for use, I'm assuming you're numbering every stall?
Correct.
So, they can be assigned during that period. And you can, just so we're clear, although you have accommodations for forty EV stalls, the reality is, if the demand doesn't call for it, you don't necessarily need to exercise that next one-third, or the six-year one-third, is that correct?
I don't believe that is correct. I think you have, the statute requires that you install.
But once again, if they're not being used.
But if it's not the demand, then correct. And we would know, you know, again, vehicles are registered with leases, so we would know, okay, we have forty EV spaces, and we have ten more vehicles in the building.
So you can assign them to other EVs.
Required, but we assign them.
You have, you said that three-bedrooms and two-bedrooms would be allowed to register in parks? Ultimately?
The tandem spaces would be assigned to that.
Okay, all right, so that's just that. So if we have, and I'm just going by the counts we have here, we have sixty-seven and eighteen, plus the COA, that's two hundred and two cars, just in three-bedroom and two-bedroom. Oh yeah, 'cause it's ninety-three one-bedrooms. So that doesn't account for the three, you know, one-bedrooms, they could all have one So that doesn't account for the three, you know, one-bedrooms, they could all have one car. So even if we do that calculation, you have 295 cars. And I would contest that, you know, a one-bedroom, even for a married couple or, you know, dating couple, you have two vehicles. I don't know where these cars are going to go. Do you have any plans for that?
We have, we frequently have two- and three-bedroom apartments that don't have more than one car. So not every single two- and three-bedroom. We didn't, we didn't have to necessitate that. So yes, you could have a one-bedroom that has two cars that needs a, that takes a tandem space in that.
And they can get a tandem space in that if they're available.
Two vehicles in there, that's, we have discretion.
Would it be more efficient to not assign the spaces and people can use them when they're fit?
Not tandem parking?
And also, being as somebody that lived in a high-rise, luxe building with a apartment garage, having unassigned spaces is a loss. I do agree on that.
I may not.
There's just not enough of them and it's, it's gonna put in a serious load. Belmar has a significant parking problem.
Another attraction to this location is the people, proximity to the ground. So you know, we've seen in our development sites where that uses cars.
Your other spaces are located in Hackensack, northern, central New Jersey. Less than two-hour, 20-minute train rides from New York City. So I'll tell you, you know, just by going around town and knowing people that live here, even people in New Orleans, you're not gonna get that same ratio as far as commuters, only transit commuters in this town as you do in your other areas of New Jersey. It's not a, it's not a fun commute. I've done it, driven from here to Hackensack, driven from here to Morris County. Nowhere's fun to go necessarily, but there's not much, there's no transit to those areas from here. It's New Yorker bus, basically. It's a long ride.
So you should go north-south, not so much going west.
Right. And so I think, yeah, that's not underestimating how many transit tenants you'll get. So repeat my question, what are you gonna do with the rest of the car? Where are they?
I'm just saying, the plan that we proposed, as the parking is required in the building, it's in the settlement agreement. We have a lot of faith that it's gonna work. This is, you know, a hundred-plus million-dollar project that we're proposing build. It has the parking that has, tenants are gonna have to deal with the parking that's built. You know, do people park on public streets? Yeah, they're public streets, but it is what it is in terms of parking. We're gonna manage it as efficiently and effectively as we can with sun parking, tandem spaces, EV spaces. But these are the numbers that we have and we're locked into that.
We need your redevelopment agreement. It doesn't come anywhere close to our curbs. So that's our, that's my question.
Any other questions for our ownerships? Is there none? Any other witnesses?
I called Robert Truitt.
Thank you.
Previous this morning, also previously. Anything change in your credentials? I was having to compare at this hearing last night. Nothing's changed. Mr. Frick, can you just testify?
Yeah, I approve, Mr. Frank, R.P.U.D.
Do we have pretty signage on the monument? It's a pretty good opportunity to review the provisions to the plan.
It did, yes.
Including the signage, but the starburst on the building, on the monument.
Yes.
And could we be able to form an opinion, respect the plan and purpose and the reasons why the lease should be granted for the signage variance if that be required?
It did, yes. Looking back at the Seaport redevelopment plan, a couple of things in there. Quoting, depending on the distance between the building facade and the public walkway, identification signs may be a combination of not more than two types, freestanding project or ground mounted sign, subject to site plan approval. So in this case, and the planner, Ms. Bell, pointed out the same thing I was thinking, which is that it appears that this redevelopment plan was focused on pedestrian, mainstream, up close. This is a little bit different, Route 35, the building's set back, the entrance is set back. So it's a little bit unique there. And with that, we have employed other two groups that this will work soon and talk about. We have a monument sign and a wall sign, we do not have a freestanding sign here. So they would apply with that, that component. Moving into the freestanding sign, the ordinance or the REB Plan suggests that a ground-mounted sign, no pilonzo, whole signs would comply there, are not higher than eight feet or wider than four feet. Two freestanding signs must be located within 20 feet of each other on the same side of the street. We have one, one ground sign, so we comply with separation sign.
Jennifer.
With regard to the dimensions, you heard it from the landscape architect. This sign's structure is four feet wide. The ordinance kind of plays something a little vertical from the exhibit here. The horizontal combined with the water feature, the depth of the entrance, the setback in building, the horizontal feature really makes sense here aesthetically works. Fits the name of the space, remember, Belmar, there's always a starburst on it within that space. So what we're looking for is where four feet is allowed, basically taking a vertical component and making it horizontal and asking for it to be 12 feet wide. As was indicated in the description of the sign, while the cabinet, the pedestal that the sign sits on is 12 feet, that sign is not 12 feet wide. It is closer to about nine feet wide, the greatest width of the lettering. If you were to take a rectangle around the space that is the lettering, it would be compliant with what a compliant 4x8 sign would be. It's less than 30 square feet in an area. So that's just for reference as far as if you would take the dimensions, look along the side and go horizontal. The area of the Vermella, Belmar, the starburst is within what is contemplated in a vertical sign. With regard to the freestanding sign, we talked a lot about it last time. It included the language Vermella, it included the starburst, we've taken the Vermella out, we're now just the starburst. Side sign should be limited to 5% of the side for 20 square feet. Again, in my opinion, the REB Plan is focused on, I think the planner, the Louisa, similar things. It's focused on pedestrian, street level visibility. We've got a four-story structure along Route 35, set back a little bit. So when you put starburst up by the fourth floor of the structure, 20 square feet really doesn't show. And if you look at those architects' elevations, aesthetically, the six-foot diameter, the 36 square foot starburst fits appropriately with the aesthetics of the building here that is placed upon that sort of third floor. So that's a description of the signs that are proposed. Again, we have two starbursts, one facing the southbound traffic on North facade, one facing on the, it's on the west facade, and then we have the monument sign, there's a variance for width. When you're looking at these variances, we're looking at the C2 capacity, which means we're looking at the positive and negative criteria. We're looking at three primary components. One is that the variance needed is for a specific piece of property. I think this is a very neat piece of property, especially within Belmar. It's got four street frontages, fronts on State Highway, Route 35, it fronts, it has a side that's on the railroad. Very different from downtown, down the mountain, Main Street, streetscape, if you will. So certainly a neat piece of property here. Number two is that we must demonstrate that the variance advances purpose of municipal land use law. I'll go through those in a minute. And number three is that the benefits of granting variance in local zoning laws will substantially outweigh any detriment that may result from improving variance. And I believe that upon testing this with the municipal land use law, we find that's the case. With regards to municipal land use law, we look at the various elements of that. I think there are a number that apply here. I'll go through several of them now. First is purpose A, which still encourages municipal action to guide appropriate users along the all-lands in state in a manner which will promote public health, safety laws in general. Given we're on a state highway and we're looking for identification of this for residents, for visitors, for first responders, health, safety in general are certainly promoted by identifying not only the building, but the entryway to the building with the monument sign. This is unique that it's on the divided highway of Route 35. So the identification where that entrance and drawing the attention to that entrance point is critical for health, safety, and general welfare. Next is purpose C, by adequate light air and open space. Again, REB Plan does factor in setback for the building from the right-of-way and from the extra pathway along the avenue for the freestanding sign. In this case, we have significant setback, especially at the entrance, where we have the driveways to be back over 100 feet to the entrance. So providing that sign, we still have a lot of light air and open space in that area, even with the sign as proposed. Next item H is to encourage location design and transportation routes which would promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location of such facilities and routes which result in congestion of light. In this case, the sign supports this residence development, uniquely located between the train station and the state highway, promoting free flow of traffic. It encourages mass transit, which in turn discourages congestion. Further promotes easy access to the highway for residents and visitors through the driveway and identification of that driveway on Route 35. And finally is purpose I, which is to promote desirable visual requirement, creative development techniques and good design information. I think the changes that we've seen from last month to today are substantial with respect to this. The inclusion of the water feature and those elements into the freestanding sign make it more than just the name that's identified on the sign and certainly show creative development technique and design. The starburst provides certainly an element of visual interest along the building. So for that, it also advances purpose I. So with that, based upon what you've heard from the architect and the landscape architect and what we discussed, I think that we certainly advance multiple purposes of the municipal land use law and the public good and that it will grant you that this variance will not substantially impair the intended purposes of the plan. That's all I have. Any other questions?
Any questions on the board? Your respective signage perspective?
I just wanted to.
Signage, I know Ms. Bell's gonna have some questions.
I just have one question. I just wanted to confirm, because on the revised made architectural plan, the starburst was, points where are the proposed address signs still 10 square feet?
They are still 10 square feet, yes.
Okay, so they comply?
What variance relief, what required of the revised plan is for signage?
What was test back to? The dimensions of the monument sign and also the area of the two building matching sides?
Is there, is there a specific feature or is there additional here designed or variance requirement of the water? It's now, now located in the front, front area.
So that I think is just part of the landscaping that's ultimately, you know, up to the force depression that's mentioned.
Okay, the testimony we have at this point is 22 feet by 10 feet approximately.
With 100 square feet.
100 square feet in the front area. We don't have something like that as a design criteria.
Correct, there's nothing that speaks to a water feature in the Seaport redevelopment plan in any way.
And the front guard setback on Route 35 is zero feet. So if it were to be interpreted as a structure, it would not create any setback variances.
Well, people usually have, my favorite swimming pool in front garden, I mean, I know that's not what it's designed for. I'm just wondering if there are additional criteria with regard to that. I'm assuming it's only three feet deep in the front and two feet deep in the back. I don't know if you addressed that at all, but I understand.
There's nothing I'm aware of that speaks specifically to design criteria for that.
So we're still, we're still in need of variance relief for the logos and the monuments.
For the area of the logos and for the width of the monument sign, correct?
Um, not while he's, I was there, because I just wanna make sure we have clear on the record. At this point in time, there's no change in the waiver relief with regard to the shade tree easily, right?
That's correct, I spoke about that last time.
That's not changed.
That's not changed.
Nothing's changed. There has been a change though, I think with regard to using the standard concrete to be applicable to move that sign here by placing papers now. Is that below, or am I incorrect?
No change, no change.
Okay, so you're still looking for the stamped concrete? Okay. And the, it's not clear to me that the poles are not, I guess the standard in the streetscape is that it, that the poles, hole-rounded lights, streetlights, should be 15 feet above the ground. The applicable poses a design for me hole-mounted on 14 feet, 6 inches. Although I will also agree that the language is a little swishing in our, in our standards, it says about 15 feet. Say about 15 feet. Is there a reason they're not at 15?
Our intention is to mirror the standard for the borough, for the polls that are used elsewhere in the borough.
And that's, and that's what you would determine. And again, no change with regard to the loading and unloading areas should be screened. It's not proposed to place any screening around.
No change to our testimony on that, okay.
Any other relief that you think you'd now need as a result of any of the redesigns?
No, everything else we've done is going to bring this into consideration.
Wanna make clear that, I assume you can bring it. Okay, thank you.
Did you say anything from your side?
No.
Thank you. Mike, I know you have a question.
Are you also, to explain to the center, so we're from here. Well, I hadn't written any of this out, but so we received your report. I have to know, are any of those comments are playing important items?
It's a question.
We received a letter regarding the water connection.
Correct.
And we received an email from the. And the comment was that we treat it as an outside approval that wasn't part of the.
Part of the.
We're doing the home.
Correct.
There'll be some sewer and water connections to that. There's quite a bit of engineering, it's still being determined exactly where it's gonna be. However, it's gonna be, how it's gonna connect to the system. Those details need to be worked out and improved by the sewer process and water. So that it can be working in size properly. So the borough's engineer said that basically they will review that and determine that.
But you made that provision, you know, do you like. It gets improved, yeah?
Well, T W, the other gentleman said we have a resolution from the county. We had submitted claims. We received a report from the parole engineer with regard to water and sewer at the local level. Before we do some comments. The, I think the point is the engineer, particularly today, that anything within his letter and our response will be a initial approval. Correct. Have you, I see that there's a lot of discussions in there about investigating our existing systems, whether it's. systems, whether it's camera or sizing condition. Have you done any of that yet?
No.
Okay, so, one of the comments from the last meeting kind of was, there was a bit of a discussion about if utilities had to be replaced, it would be replaced only within the project's frontage based on redevelopment. And I think I heard that point. Is that your position and is that the position of our engineers?
So, I will say this, it is, there is a question about exactly where the pipes are going to have to be connected, how big they're going to be, and how far the connection is going to have to go. And we are hopeful that we're only going to have to adjust sewer and water pipes around approximately 400. That may not be, we will not know until the cameras get in there and the current investment for our engineers is going to present what we see in the type of those, a road that buys up the property and the gate of access. We think that there are many pipes that don't really need that proper, the groundwater faucets or their momentum and that's it. And it's only know what exactly is, not that we don't want to commit to doing anything more than we're obviously out there to do, but you actually have the ordinance that's almost more useful and more, more community that allows for cost sharing, because we don't want to build a sewer line or water line. Some other developer, someone says, thank you very much, we're going to be paying the advantage of the pipe that we just paid the dollars for, so we're going to disperse. So you actually have the formula, any ordinance that requires who pays what and how it gets out there. And we think that that covers the borough at, we look very agree with it.
But there were certain recommendations also in this thing, you just can hear, there are more materials that have to change, besides pipe, all types of things, is that number two?
So I, this is like, this is your technical, so it's, it's a redevelopment, it's a settlement, it's a, I don't think, the like, what the added protection.
But there seems like there could be significant cost to the borough because of this project.
So there are other mechanisms to, to raise money for, so if we have to go down the sewer, like, so you've got other, there are legal mechanisms, so that those other owners have to, have to, have to, because there's a legal process, you have to pass the process.
But that's, I mean, that's obviously also based on geography and what else is in the area. And you're it, kind of right here, right? You're taking up two block, three block wide, 8th Avenue, all the way to the railroad. So I don't know what other developer, I know, I don't know, you know, it depends on where everything goes, right? But if we have a line on 8th Avenue, that's, you know, an eight inch line right now, we do need an eight inch line just for the building, is what it appears to be, that eight inch line is now, you know, probably not large enough. Is that, your, your statement before about the property frontage and then obviously then opposite of that would be cost sharing, so would cost to the borough?
So the cost sharing could apply to other properties?
Well, the other property owners aren't creating a problem, so the other property owners aren't-
Future, future.
So it's future, so like, somebody down the block decided, let's say, fifth round comes around, somebody wants the, well, it's, it's happening. The wall has cost sharing to allow a person, to accompany a person, a person.
It's not a recovery for you, yeah.
So it's recovery for you, there's no, there's no tax dollar being laid out by the borough and you have, so I guess the scenario is through this investigation, Smurfs comes back, the borough comes back and says, you know what, from your project directly into Smurfs' Trump line, we're going to need 8-inch PVC. And from, and that's say, a mile worth of 8-inch PVC, that, that's through into the Smurfs' Trump line, who's responsible for paying for that mile of 8-inch PVC, PVC?
I can't answer that question.
Why don't we, why don't we take it this way? Do you have the engineer letter of August of 2025? The board has received it, it's marked PB 11. There's a section referred to as sewer system comments, and then section C. Do you have?
Section C.
Section C, and then there, there's based upon our review, we have the following comments. And then there, there's 1 to 10 for the sewer, and then with regards to the water system, section D, there are one through 50 comments. Can you address each of those comments as to this is agreeable, this isn't agreeable?
There's a pretty key one that states in number eight of the water, the 4-inch rain on 10th Avenue shall be replaced with an 8-inch rain on Route 35, all the way to Main Street. Is that full expense of this developer or is that what you're going to consider a cost share expense?
So we did respond to that letter, and obviously it's implied.
Do we have that letter?
You should, I'll forward it to the board secretary.
Can you read the response for that? Maybe I have it in the Chinese file.
The comment is, the proposal, comment?
Well, if we just, if we can just go through item 1 through 10 for the sewer system, whether or not that's amenable or not amenable. I, I'm not looking to lock you into anything, I just want to know what's at issue, because generally speaking, what I would do when I was drafting the resolution would be, you know, to comply with the recommendations made by the borough engineer, and I would reference this document. If there's, if there's an issue, there's an issue, I'm not, again, but if there is no issue, I would highlight that in the resolution that that is going to be resolved at a later date. And then I would do the same thing with the water section.
Did you, was it an August 18 letter or was it your August 18?
Let me just clarify. Did he say that the settlement for the sewer needs to be, you want to know who's going to pay for it?
Yeah.
Because we need the people to build the pipe, you can't have the building to that. If there's an opportunity for us to recruit a, a rat or some other developer that's road, the law commits, and we would recruit that at that moment.
I'm looking to see the, the burden on the town, that's what, that's why I'm asking these questions, because it's not very clear.
There's no burden, you are well protected on the board.
So at no time, any infrastructure requirements have to be that would be required to service your building will be the burden of the tax payer development? The, the borough of Delmar will never have to strip a check to improve infrastructure to progress for the building?
Support infrastructure, if we are triggering the improvement, it's our improvement, if third party's benefit, they then have to be punished.
There's an infrastructure that has to be built for us to have a building, we're going to build it, there are, if we have an opportunity to remove some of that from other developers that have road, legally we're allowed to do that, and we expect to do that.
It seems like the current plan in the town requires, I like that. Interesting question, because it was kind of unclear where this was all about.
That's the protocol, they'll follow on the TB 12. So the opportunity to read through it has to help with the current down load.
Can I just ask, when you do these reports for the sanitary sewer system, you came up with a 21,225 gallon per day increase based on the current load and the proposed load? I think the proposed load is probably more accurate than what you get, because you, you know, this is something that's new, it's going to be occupied in one month. The proposed, the current loads are, you know, probably based on standard numbers for a motel, maybe even more active motel than what we have. You know, the banquet facilities probably more active than what we have had over the last 15 years, you know, they're not used more than three nights a week for the most part. Is there any risk of using these numbers without knowing how much we're actually discharging right now? Have you done any meter calculations on, like, you could use the water meter to calculate how much sewer and everything, have you done any of that research to know that, hey, we're really only using 21,000 gallons per day more than what is currently being used? Because I think that's another concern of mine, is that the numbers are, you know, they're in engineering books, there are all these things, but I think what we have here is a much more vacant piece of property, or less, you, less driven.
We haven't done a flow metering on what's happening today.
Right.
But what was requested by the engineer, what our response was in the letter of the book today, is we will inspect the pipes and make sure they have capacity for what we're proposing, right?
And that all includes?
So the capacity is, the capacity that we would be evaluating as part of this letter is related to proposed, so what's existing is almost irrelevant at that point, to make sure that it can handle regardless of what's happening today.
And considering what else connects to that, right down the road.
Let me, let me go back to, serious question. The board has not had an opportunity to review, it was received today, the August 18 letter. My, my concern is the PB 11, and I guess we should probably mark the August 18 letter, I just don't have it. But I would mark this as, 39, let's see. We're up to 40, okay, yes. I would mark this as A 40, which is the comments.
This letter is what triggered the email from your end of the year, saying the sewer and water are outside of the building?
Well, no, his, his letter was prepared August 7.
He responded by email.
Your, your letter was prepared August 18.
Responding to the email that sent this letter.
So that, that letter went to him early this morning, and at 8:40 a.m. he responded and said, Mr. Boyle, thank you for the response, and I would view the water and sewer requirements and appliance etc. We consider it as an outside, we can see the protocol, and that is a resolution from partners.
Does it matter for resolution to lie? I'm just trying to bottom line.
Yeah.
I'm real, real simple. If, 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 if in the resolution, we can talk as much as we want to be after that resolution, we'll see it well in the hands. But if I put in the resolution that you'll comply with the planning, planning, planner's comments and the engineer's comments and reference all those letters, are you going to have a problem with that? And that's, that's where I'm going with this, because we haven't seen this, and we haven't, and I don't think, you received the comments back from even our engineer that you just read into the record.
Well, I'm glad that I didn't include it in the record. And I would say that we would, we would comply with those letters except as we testified to, during the course of the year, because there have been some back and forth and some changes in response to the comments and the work protections. So without parsing through any one of every one of them at 9:45 at night, we can't offer them. We'll get transferred to proceedings, I'll get them to your council.
Get me, get me the ones that you disagree with and look at through, because otherwise I'd have my engineer talk about those things where we would parse them on the record, because this is where it happens.
Can, can we see the 18th letter? Can that be passed to the senators?
I, I just have the one.
Just untapped?
It's an exemption average, it's 3D review. And it's designed to reference the engineer's comments of August 7. Would you like to see the August 7 letter?
No.
Okay.
Comments and responses.
No, I, I have a relatively simple solution, I'll, you know, go through those. Because sometimes the comment is acknowledged, it's not agreed to or disagreed with, it's just acknowledged, I want to know what acknowledged means, you know, does that mean to comply?
Yeah, I would like, first comment here in addition to this NJBD treatment works through the necessary, this project application for treatment, I'm receiving where, at least where people play, it's not on the, the necessary, acknowledged. Yes, we're heard, either comply, we will comply.
Acknowledged there means to comply.
Correct. The project will be constructed due to the borough, Delmar, putting sewer details. Acknowledged, yes, we will comply with that. So anything that says acknowledged means we will comply?
Correct.
For the record?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be a longer one.
You know, the only caveat is in responses is, is the ability to get that cost sharing back from other developers who build and is connecting to, we may have that call, that's really the nature of it.
As long, as long as that's coming from developers, not a, a product.
Connectors to the-
Future, future connectors.
Any other questions for the engineer? None, okay. Miss Bell, Jason, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other testimonies?
I don't know, I think the board there is a chat, I'm showing more of them.
Yes, I do. Okay, if you'd like to make a comment about this application, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address.
Hi, good evening. Good morning.
Yeah.
My name is Kevin Kooey, K O O, N J Y, 2097. Most people don't, sorry. Thank you all for being here, and, you know, it's been hard to listen to some of the testimonies today. I find it a little bit disingenuous for the applicant to be comparing anything we're doing in this small short town with other developments that they have done throughout New Jersey. Many of their other developments are in Carney, Newark, Harrison, Paramus, other large towns where their developments and their buildings don't represent the size and magnitude and the percentage of a population that this is going to represent for Delmar. And I think that should be really concerning for all of you, because whatever's here is going to define Delmar for a long time. for a long time. Thirty, forty years ago, when I came, when I was twenty, it was a drinking town and, you know, it was a party town. That definition has changed quite a bit, and I'm now a full-time resident here. And I really like the character of the town. And I just feel whatever you put here is really going to define us for the next ten, fifteen years. And I think that's really concerning. And we need to make sure, you guys have asked a lot of very good questions tonight, which I think were appropriate. I think we need to get some better answers than we got tonight. A couple of examples I'll give. One was about the length of the contracts. And, Mr. Mayor, you made the point, they've got a hundred and ninety-six units. How many blocks in our town would that represent? An awful lot. And this is going to represent a fairly large, large size of our population. And we need to make sure that there's rules in place that's going to protect it. I hear what they're saying about their loans, and they can't do short-term loans, but we really need to make sure that we're protecting it so we're not creating a whole bunch of seasonal rentals. I know you all said that. I think it's important to get it in writing and important to get documented. Mr. Blazew, you made the point about the park. And that, to me, was extremely concerning. I think you said two hundred and twenty-one spaces. Take me up E V if I heard the number right, or two and one, something like that. For the number of cars that we're going to have parking there, just from the residents, never mind their guests that are going to be coming on Fridays and Saturdays in the summer, that number of cars that are going to be parking there is going to be significantly larger than that. And the answer from the applicant was, well, the tenants just have to deal with it. That's not a very good answer for us. Because it's not just the tenants of this unit that need to deal with it. It's all the shop owners, all the store owners on Main Street, on Eighth Avenue and Tenth Avenue who want their customers to be able to park there, won't be able to do so. So plus it's the tourists, where are they going to park? Right? If they're taking up all those spaces and they don't have any answers for that, that's going to change this town quite a bit. I think we need to think about that. Long and hard. I know I was not here at the meeting last month, but I know there was testimony about a traffic code. To me, one of the most dangerous places in this town is on Route thirty-five. When I'm coming southbound, you go over the bridge, and it's a very scenic bridge. You can look to the east and see the ocean all the way down Sharp River. Look to the west, you see the marina, all very scenic. And then you come to a hard stop because cars are backed up on that traffic light already. And if you're trying to make the left turn on Eighth Avenue, there is a turning lane. But many times that turning, many times that turning lane is backed up all the way into the main lane of traffic. And if a train is coming, it gets back to be confirmed. So what's going to happen when we add another five hundred cars that have to go into that general area? Eighth Avenue is already really difficult to navigate. And now we're going to have cars backed up in the main lane of traffic, all the way back up on that bridge. And that's going to become a really dangerous place to drive. And then just one, maybe one more comment, and a number of you made it about the name. And I don't think the name represents anything about our town, our history, or what we want our future to be. I understand and appreciate that many other towns say, yes, we want to have the Vermellen name. But I don't know if a seashore town really cares about the name Vermella. And I can see it being shortened on social media and will become the Vermin of Belmar pretty soon. And none of us want that. And I can't see why you couldn't name it Short Point at Belmar, a Vermella property. I mean, you still get your Vermella name in there, but people won't be calling it Vermella. It'll be something that's more indicative to what our town represents and won't be one our town to be going for. So that's all for my comments tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public? Good evening.
I mean, does that mean we have all free properties in Belmar? And I've been in love with this town for forty years. I've been in this town. I've watched it go from a party town to beautiful homes. You're asking about how many blocks that would be? If you just think about it, twenty blocks on in Belmar, this would be all of Ocean Avenue and all the way down Main Street, the amount of properties that they're building. And I understand that legally that's how many you want. I have a very hard time with a five-story building, fifty feet high. We have a parking problem. You're a very strong, rich company. Can't you take off the top level? That would be that many of those apartments. The building in the original photo there on Eighth Avenue, that looks like a parking garage anyway. Between Eighth Avenue and the tracks, thirty-five, Eighth tracks, let that be a parking garage. Solve the parking problem first. You're a hundred percent right that traffic is miserable on Highway thirty-five, whether you're going north or south, east or west, on Eighth Avenue, Tenth Avenue. It's, if you don't know the back rooms, in and out, going through Spring Lake and Avalon, sometimes you can't even get into town. And you can get clipped on thirty-five, the way it backs up. People come down thirty-five super fast, and all of a sudden, it's just a quick stop. And I made that left on Eighth three times a day. I agree with the name Coastal Belmar, Belmar Harbor, anything by Vermella. Vermilla name is very prominent and established, but it just doesn't belong in the town. Coastal Point, which is another development down the road. But any name that says Belmar Harbor Coastal, anything by Vermella, I think would be a huge improvement. As far as the sewer line, whether you need eight-inch PVC. I've lived through the Belmar Arcade, it's one of my properties, it's right there on Fifteenth and Ocean. I'm near there where the Belmar Arcade was. So they tear it down, they build eleven, thirteen houses, and they rip up the road because they have to put all new water and sewer in. And we lived, somebody who lived through it, the roads being all torn up for God knows how long. Traffic's going to be even worse because you're going to be tearing up for the water sewer line there on Highway thirty-five. I've got a thousand thoughts in my head, even the back of the property on the railroad tracks. There's no reason why you can't re-stack that parking lot and put side-by-side-by-side numbered spots for those people. You have to answer the problem for the parking. Everybody will be coming down and using their spots and using between the Belmar Towers, what is that, Belmar Marina, Marina View Towers, the big gigantic building that's nine stories across from the Belmar Marina Lodge. There's double parking. It's hard right now for those because the people at Marina View Towers are parking there. But the problem has to be solved. I know you legally, you're like, okay, well, we're giving you twenty of this. These are all rentals for you. And as far as putting a stipulation of a three-month no-seasonal leases, when you approve, which is another thing I despise, the Belmar Inn being torn down and putting up a fifty-four square foot building five feet from the property line was disgusting. But they did put a deep restriction on that, that there would be no seasonal rentals. And those are going to be condos, I believe, and will be sold. I know, I'm all over this.
It's okay.
Sorry.
It's your time.
It is my time. I am so passionate about the lack of parking. I'm so against high density. I don't believe in this. If you're going to do it, I would much rather have it on thirty-five than you destroying our town by putting it on Ocean Avenue and on our streets coast to the ocean. It blocks wind. It does everything, getting in and out of here. And, you know, there's already that third lane, so people are going to be able to get in and out safely. But it's going to cause such a massive, was there a traffic study? I don't know how they expect this to feasibly work with just the one entrance in the front. I believe we possibly need one in the back, and like you said, with the parking spots back there. If you could turn one of those buildings into a parking garage, I'm all for that. I have one more thought. But I remember I'll come back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public? I do want to highlight one thing for the public. This particular project, there'll be a few others coming through, is part of a settlement agreement. That includes density, that includes height, that includes parking. These are criteria that's dictated by settlement agreement to this board. So there's very little, actually, there's nothing we can do about those elements because they're part of the settlement agreement. So we're somewhat limited as to what our role is in this approval process. But that being said, we are, as a board, certainly reviewing and challenging and pushing those elements that we have some say in. But I want to make sure you understand that there are limitations.
No, I understand that they're doing everything they possibly can because they're greedy. They're going to get as much as possible. They're not caring about what's best for the town. And you have those two other developments that are coming up. It's a disgrace destroying Belmar the way it is. I'm not saying any of you can control it unless the mayor can change some huge policy that after this, there's no more high density. But I believe something should be done. I understand the affordable housing, yes. Affordable housing, fine. Let it be brought up somewhere else. Why can't we go proactive and you buy us some houses and give us twenty affordable housing units? Buy up a couple boarding houses. Let Belmar do something to put those in place so we don't have to put up with buildings like this.
I agree.
And by the way, this is beautiful, and it will be nice. It's a burden on the town, it's a burden on me, on my son, my uncle who lives in the senior building. It's just, it's a burden. And for these guys, they're like cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. And for the rest of us, we're like, the ladies that were on Sixth Avenue, they're like, we have trouble parking right now. These people are going to be parking all down Seventh and Eighth and Sixth and Main Street. My friends who own businesses on Main Street are suffering because of the parking situation. And that's it. Thank you for letting me finish my thoughts.
No, thank you.
Jill McAvoy, I believe, we are on Seven Hundred Main Street. Yeah, the only thing, you know, we're up against it is we have to do this. And we've got to start building parking garages downtown, even if we start small. Maybe move the Doughboy Monument to Memorial Row on Main Street. We get a three-row, a small garage there, and we get parking at the Marina because of this too. I don't understand why the, all the entrances and exits have to be on the surface road. We should have an entrance right off of Route thirty-five. Can't you have a cutaway on the right side of the road, thunder, going directly into, use of the parking for the residents?
It does.
You know, whoever did the independent traffic studies, it's really tough. We've lost the left turn and the ability to make a left over the way of the tracks along the senior building years ago, and that created problems on the foundation of the track. But also, you have to understand, you're going to raise the population to stand by about thirteen to fifteen percent in a four-block radius to stop this more aggressive part of town between Main Street and the river. So, you know, there's other developments coming, and they're going to have to use that left off of the bridge on Main Avenue to get home as well. And then the only other thing I have, you know, we need to compromise with you on the lease agreements. Can you make a compromise with them on the name? Just like this gentleman suggested, you know, give it a name like Sunset Day, a Vermella property. You know, just make that the headline, but still have your name on the marquee. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public? Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion, open it for comments. Rick, I'll start with you.
First off, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for taking our previous comments with heart. And I can tell that you did a whole lot of work on this. I also appreciate the compromise, you know, of the signage, you know, as far as that goes. And also on the leasing, I appreciate the compromise. We're somewhat limited on what we can do for the folks that make the comment, okay? But I think you guys have shown what you want to work with. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Chris?
I'm going to echo Rick's comments and say, you know, our jurisdiction is limited. But I do feel that we have been able to make some changes and move forward. And I do appreciate the leadership development listening to us and really, especially with the, with the facade changes. I think that was a huge step forward. I appreciate you guys listening, understanding the assignment, and executing very well. Nothing will ever be perfect in anyone's eyes, and that's just the way the world goes, especially when you're absolutely handcuffed. Am I happy about the branding? Absolutely not. Do I think the public has spoken and agrees with my point there? But we can only move so far forward. Do I like, am I comfortable with the amount of parking that has been allocated within this project? Absolutely not. But again, that's an area where we don't have jurisdiction, and we are handcuffed. Am I comfortable allowing leases shorter than twelve months? Absolutely not. But again, we've come to a compromise. Do I find that compromise acceptable? No, but there is at least a compromise. But that's all my comments at this point. We are handcuffed in a lot of stuff we can do. It is what it is, but we have made a lot of progress moving forward.
Thank you. Mike, please.
Yes, the progress is there, the look, the colors, and this and that. But just because we're handcuffed doesn't mean we have to like it, because we don't. It doesn't mean we have to go for it, because we don't. And because of where we're at, and because of the advantage you've taken of our ordinances, I, you know, there's nothing you can do to convince me to like this project with this density and this lack of parking, with parking being just one of the most significant problems in this town. If this were a code compliant, you know, zero variance project, it would be probably around a hundred and twenty-four units with close to two hundred spaces. And we have a hundred and ninety-eight with two hundred and fifty. I sat on the Route thirty-five bridge last Friday. I was the second car in line, and I got the red light making a left. I sat there for six and a half minutes waiting to turn left on Eighth Avenue. The line over the bridge behind me was absurd. So to force your entrance and exit on the Eighth and Tenth Avenue, I think is a huge mistake. It just is. In the traffic study, there's no altering of that light with that train and that schedule that's going to fix that problem. I, you know, we didn't get to really talk about the traffic study. I would have liked to see some sort of possibly a left-hand turn lane on thirty-five, but then would have been a traffic light possibly because it's a three-lane road right there. I don't know if that would have been a legal left. There's going to be people bypassing this, trying to pull U-turns on Tenth Avenue now. It's a traffic disaster. It's a parking disaster. It's a density disaster, and this town does not deserve it.
Thank you. Bill?
You've kind of heard it all. Thank you for listening to us. The property is prettier than it was a couple of weeks back. And I think you really showed some attention to us here. There's a visceral, almost a visceral response to parking and density in the town. I know you know that intellectually, you certainly know it. It's a tight project. The settlement, obviously, handbooks. But I would encourage, be as flexible as you can, even now when you think this is solved and we've problemized on, say, the leasing. The more flexible, the more creative you can be, especially in the parking, especially in the leasing situation. It relieves a lot of anxiety that maybe not relieves the problems once the project is underway. But the mayor and council, I think, are well intentioned here. The more relief you can find in any creative way for parking and or the leasing issues, it's a chance that maybe the town and the mayor and the council have to create some new ordinances. So be as flexible- some new ordinances. So be as flexible as you can in those particular areas and thanks for your presence.
Thank you. Brett?
I do, I like a lot of the changes that have been made since the first building, especially the set I did, especially with the shutters. I think those are a great idea. I think I reiterate the, you know, the stone being a little bit lighter. You know, I have issues with the, with the leasing. I think six months is still short. You know, I think it's still setting us up for disaster in the future. I think as a planning board, we're looking towards the future and trying to plan for the future. I echo Chris's comments with the name. I think some of the public, members of the public have great ideas. I think the parking, to reiterate what everybody else was saying, parking is an issue. It's really frustrating because you look around town and you look at all the big buildings that have been built and the parking lots are half-empty at any given time. So that's why my feeling is if you make the spots unassigned, then they get used. If they're assigned, most of the time those spots are empty. That's my feeling. I think overall, I think the town finds itself in a bad situation, like a lot of towns in New Jersey right now with affordable housing. I feel like we're in a tough spot.
Thank you, Brett. Luther?
Although I don't like the building, I think the building's a bit, you know, I appreciate all the changes bringing life into this big building. That being said, I want to comment about the name and the suggestions I thought were very good. As members of the board talked about compromise, we compromise on that and they give us an identity at what this building on, which is, I think, that go a long way since the things that we don't like with most parts, the density and the parking, we really can't change that, but we still have the ability to help us with the need. So, thank you. Thank you for all of the changes. We could get a couple of other ones.
Thanks, Luther. Mr. Mayor?
For the public that are here, I just want to take a little history. This, this project started out with a, with an ordinance change to allow a six-story building on this site. And that's one of the things that I ran on to get elected was to keep down the development in this town because it was crazy. It was over, well over 200 units. It was called the Mediterranean at the time and it was just out of control. And even though this is not, you know, I don't like any of these affordable housing projects. Let me just put it out there right, right in the start. I think they're too big. There's not enough parking. The town is too small to handle all of these rental units. And I think someday we're going to have a glut of rental units. And that is why I'm concerned about the issue of the seasonal rentals. But to go back, so we went, we, we got it down to at least four stories and one level of parking. So, I mean, I think that was a, was a plus. Do I like the idea, again, that, that we have 198 units and 200 and somewhat parking spaces? Absolutely not. All right. But I want the public to understand that the affordable housing process in New Jersey is geared to provide affordable housing through developers, through developers whose goal obviously is to make money. And the agreement that the state has made, our state senators and our state assemblyman, don't blame the governor or governors, it's all done through legislation, is they made a deal which says, you know, if you build this and throw in a few affordable housing units, you know, you're good to go. All right. So what's happening is, you know, you're getting a small number of affordable housing units and a huge number of market rate units. And that's, that's the imbalance. And what's happening is the towns have really very little to say about that because we're in like a four-way negotiation. You have the court now is involved, developers are involved, Fair Share Housing Center is involved, and the municipality is involved. The municipality has no leverage whatsoever in terms of what's going on. Okay? Because what happens is, even in our case where we, we were able to, to file a declaratory judgment action so we could have builder remedy suits, what happens is a developer comes in and they say, I can give Fair Share Housing X number of affordable housing, but I have to have 100 units, 200 units, and they have to be, you know, six stories higher or eight stories higher or whatever. And affordable housing, they're saying, that's great. Good. Go for it. Give us as much as we, we can get. And then the court's like, well, yeah, that sounds good to me. And then we're sitting there saying, but that, we don't want that. We don't, we can't, we can't, we don't have room for something like that. Well, you know, the, you know, the court says, well, you know, you're going to have to do what you're going to have to do because it's a Supreme Court, you know, mandate that every town gives up, you know, provides affordable housing. And, and so what it is, is it's a boon to developers. And I'm just going to say it right out there. They are making so much money on this affordable housing. It is unbelievable. Okay? Because we're getting, in our town alone, the number of units we're going to have is enormous. And it's not called for. Okay? I agree with you. This property here could have been used for other purposes, but everything in America is about money, making money, making as much money. They don't care about the town. They don't care about the parking. Right? All they care about is the bottom line. And I don't mean to say they can do every developer. I haven't had one developer come up and say, you know, I want to do something nice for Belmar. You know, I want to do this or I want to do that. Nope. They want bigger. They want higher, wood dense, whatever. All right? So that's where we're at. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not happy with any of the, of the agreements we made, but we had to. We were forced. Our arms were twisted and, you know, it's a, it's a no man's situation. And as someone said, every town is going through this. You just have to pick up the paper and you'll see, old township, you know, up north, that everyone's going through this. Yet, at the same time, they allow cities who, I forget the exact term, they get some kind of urban aid, they don't have to provide any affordable housing. So Jersey City, where I grew up, they can put up a 2,000-unit building, they don't have to have one affordable housing unit anymore. Okay? But Belmar, you know, we have to have 20% of whatever it is, more or less. If they build 100 unit building, only 20 of them are going to be affordable housing and 80 are going to be market rate units. So, you know, this is where we're at. Okay? It's a, it's a lousy situation to be in. We're still going through it. To put it bluntly, we have, we're in the no man's situation. The court sides with the developers and Fair Share Housing. All Fair Share Housing cares about is getting more units and all the developers care about is getting more money. Okay? So that's the bottom line. So to get back to this case, I do think the building looks great. It's, it's a nice building. I agree, we're going to have major problems with parking because even if once, even if you have 50 people who get visitors, where are they going to park? There's no visitor parking in any of these places. All right? So what that means is they're either going to go into the marina to park or they're going to go over the railroad tracks in town someplace to park. Do they care? No, they don't care. Because all they want to do is close the deal, get the money. All right? And we know that, you know, I know that's your business, you know, but what's going to happen is New Jersey's going to become a town, a, a state where you're not going to be able to move. Because every developer is going to be putting up more and more and more affordable housing. And that's just, just going to be it. People in Belmar are going to be inundated with people looking for parking. Yes, everybody's said, build a parking garage. Yeah, that's great. Where do we get the money from to do that? You know, it costs like almost, the estimates are $35,000 a spot for a parking garage. Figure it out. You know, are they going to give us the money to do that? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Because they don't care about Belmar. All they're looking at is for their own bottom line. Okay? Should they? Would it be nice if they would? It would be great, you know, if the five developers that are developing in town would say, you know what, we'll, we'll throw peanuts to you. You know, what's a million dollars to them? This is a hundred million dollar project. But, you know, we have the land. We can put a parking garage up, but we don't have the funds to do it. Okay? And I think that's one of the big complaints that residents have. And I agree with them. You know, we do need a parking garage because the developers do not want to put enough parking in on their properties because they want to maximize the number of units that they can get in. They didn't have to put 198 units in here. They could have put 100 units. Right? But 198, I don't know, some accountant somewhere is figuring out how much money, you know, how much more money they're going to make by putting in 198 units. Okay? We don't get to ask them that question. You know, like, why do you have to make X million dollars? Why couldn't you make X million more, you know, less something to do that? No, but that doesn't work. But we have to sit here and, you know, go through all of these questions and colors and all this stuff when, when we know none of us really want this, but we're stuck with it. All right? Because of the courts, because of the legislation, nobody wants to change it. There's too much money involved. Pure and simple. The developers have, you know, they're in hoots with Fair Share Housing. I don't care what you say. Try to go online and find out who gives donations to Fair Share Housing. You can't find out. Okay? That's confidential. All right? I guarantee you, if we can find out, you're going to find out it's mostly developers. So they got, they have, they have the goose that laid the golden egg. Right? It's called affordable housing. If they want affordable housing, why doesn't the state just build it? With all the money that is being spent in this state to try to comply with this affordable housing rules, they can just build affordable housing for people. Right? But again, that wouldn't make the developers any money. So that's why that's not working. As far as the, you know, the leasing for less than six months, yeah, we can, I'm okay with that. But I also think the town needs to, needs to look at changing its ordinances to make that. The other thing I would really like to look at, and I have to tell the council is, I think we're going to have to look into rent control. Because I think, I know there's legislation, state legislation that says new developments can't get rent controlled, but legislation can change. Because I think what's happening in Belmar is as we're getting new developments in, the existing rentals are saying, well, they can get $3,000 a month. Why can't I get $3,000 a month? Well, I'm getting complaints from people who lived in Belmar in rentals for years and now they're getting increases every year. $500, $500. So what's happening is as we bring in more developers with more rentals, the prices of existing apartments, you know, are going up. And, you know, again, that's the market. Do what the market can bear. But what it's doing is it's driving out middle-class people, I believe, from Belmar because they cannot afford to live, even in the existing apartments. Now, we don't know what the rents are going to be here in this apartment, in this complex, but I know in some of them in the town, they're, they're over $3,000. $30,000 to rent in Belmar. I mean, this is not like Louisville, you know, or New York City. But, you know, I'm just concerned that at some point, the market's going to just break and you're going to see, you know, rents starting to go down because it's going to have a glut of apartments in Belmar. And that's the concern, I think, that some of you raised in terms of the rentals. What's going to happen at that point? What's going to happen when a million can't rent 50% of their units? That's, as Chris said, that's when they're going to look for an investor, right? Say, well, you know, we want to get out of this view because Belmar's, you know, it's overcrowded. Nobody wants to go there. There's no parking. You can't get anywhere. You can't go west. There's no, there's no, you know, way to, to move around. But we're okay. We already have that with a developer. One of our affordable housing developers has the property up for sale already. They didn't even, they didn't even build it, put a shovel in the ground and they want to sell it. Okay? So this is what we're faced with. And as everyone up here said, you know, the planning board has little that it really can do at this point. And, you know, I know it's frustrating for the residents to, to, you know, have to deal with hearing that we can't do anything about the parking, we can't do anything about the traffic, you know, we can't do anything about, you know, terms of the rental, you know, because we're, we're not in the driver's seat at this point. Because the courts, you know, are ruling what we can do. And, you know, we have a situation right now where we're ready to finish our third round, you know, affordable housing and the courts are just playing it. Play, delay, delay. Right? Because they're trying to make other deals with others, other, you know, developers, get more people in. It's, it's really almost criminal, the way this affordable housing process is working in this state. And it doesn't seem like anybody wants to do anything about it. And then again, I go back to my statement, because everybody's making too much money except for the towns. Okay? So that's my spiel. I think-
That was quite a spiel.
Yeah.
I was almost going to set a timer.
But I'm just about to cut you off. I mean, I hear people complain all the time about, oh, boy, we're dead. You know, our hands are tied. You know, the council's hands are tied. You know, we've gritted our teeth and, you know, and it's, it's like you're in a no man's situation. You have no leverage. You're, you're trying to, you're negotiating against three different people, three different groups, and you really have nothing that you can use to convince them. So build a good building, you know, what can I say? Looks nice and hopefully make a lot of money.
We're officially cutting you off.
That's it? I'm done.
I'll offer some final comments. Obviously, there's a lot of frustration you're hearing. It's not just from my fellow board members, the mayor, who certainly we're heard quite a bit from, but the public as well. Public's been frustrated with, with the developments that we have coming to town for quite some time. That being the case, we are where we are. I agree. It's changing the complexion of the town. I would say that what our responsibility here tonight on the board is really to focus on what we have the ability to influence, what we have the ability to participate in. I think between the last meeting and this meeting, we've asked for some architectural enhancements to try to make this more appealing and more representative of Belmar, of a sure town, despite the density, despite the parking issues, despite everything that you've heard frustration about. And I think the applicant has come a long way with that. I think this building and the materials that we're actually seeing here, other than the lighter stone, clearly represent the move we were looking for, beyond that with the window changes, the great color changes, the awnings Brett, that you, you and I were focused on earlier. And despite the, you know, the, the fact that some of this, you know, really looks quite a bit different, I think the changes that you've made, the Eighth and 35 change on the roof line has come a long- I think the changes that you've made, the eighth and thirty-five change on the roof line has come a long way. I wanna make sure as a board, we're focused on those elements that have come forward, and really what variances they're coming in for. And I'll, Doug, I'll ask you to remind us of what those C-two variances are. We talked a little bit about the signage, and the civil engineer focused on that, and the positive and negative criteria, and I really think that, you know, from my perspective, you know, we asked them to make some significant changes in that signage. And I agree that, you know, moving to a monument sign, especially in a drive-by location, makes a lot of sense. I also think that, you know, limiting it to the, you know, six-by-six logos on the two signs, you know, it looks more tasteful, it doesn't feel like that Marriott that you're driving by. You know, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the naming convention, and I know that's important, and it's a matter of pride for the ownership team. And there were some suggestions on, you know, perhaps changing the naming to be, you know, a Vermilla property or something along that line. I'd ask you to give some consideration to that, because there were a number of comments about that. But, you know, as it relates to the variances we're here to look at and the aesthetics that we've been influenced, I think we've come a long way. Both in the variances and the relief they're looking for in reducing that, as well as the aesthetics that we can try to get out of this building. Whether we like it or dislike it, this is our building, we've gotta make the best of it. And I think they've come a long way in helping us get there, so I wanted to thank you for that. I really appreciate it. So Doug, if you could remind us of those.
What I'm gonna do is, before I frame the resolution, I think the chair is correct. We should identify that this is largely conforming, like, except for the following. I'm gonna describe the difference in the relief, alright? They are seeking a variance, that's part of our zoning criteria. They're seeking variance in each one of the two logos, two logo signs, well, characterized logo sign, and the monument sign, because they're not conforming with the standards, okay? They're not claiming a C-one hardship variance. What they're basically claiming is a C-two variance. And, you know, I'm not gonna reiterate comments made by their planner, you know, by anyone going for special reasons, those kinds of things. Rather, I'm gonna cite the Supreme Court, the Jersey Supreme Court, discussing the C-two variance, and then make a comment on that, okay? The Supreme Court, speaking to the general concept of the C-two variance, stated that, "By definition, no C-two variance should be granted on merely the purposes of the owner of the residence. The grant of approval must actually benefit the community in that it represents a better zoning alternative for the property. Focus of a C-two case then will not meet the characteristics of the land in light of current zoning requirements, which might create a hardship, but rather, meet the characteristics of the land that presents an opportunity for improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community." Creation of a desirable visual environment is one of those things that you can do. But what I'd like to say to the boards that are represented in this instance is, now, what's your stance on it? If Mayor and Council were originally looking at this property, would they think that the signage in this instance was appropriate? This is a unique parcel. Would they say, "Okay, this fits, in this instance, we might design something different"? Has the applicant made his case for you that there is something in this signage that also benefits the community? Heard about the location, heard about making sure you know where you're going. You've heard that for the past time. Now, in large part, residents that live there already know where they're going, but they're still gonna have visitors there, and is this signage appropriate for visitors there as a benefit to the community in that instance? That's for you to decide. You don't have to go up for those reasons. The applicant has to present that. Those reasons are very good. The other thing that they're asking for are certain design waivers, okay? Design waivers are different than variances. Because they're, I'm reading, they're really in our design section of the site plan in this instance. And in this instance, they're asking for a design waiver that the utility and shade tree easements of these ten feet in width on both sides of the street shall be provided. The applicant's not providing that. What's the standard for a waiver? It's set forth in NJSA forty, colon, fifty-five D, dash, fifty-one, small power B, close power B. "So long as the exceptions are reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of provisions for site plan review and approval, if the literal enforcement of want or more provisions is impractical or will exact and undo hardship because of particular conditions pertaining to the land in question." And that's also mirrored in our borough ordinances. So in this instance, what's the purpose? You have to think about, what is the purpose of having, you know, the ten feet for shade tree and utility easements? And then, same as the applicants are doing it, and I'm not saying what the applicant's testimony is, but if, basically, based upon the landscaping that they're doing and the other improvements that they're saying to you, you know, this is what we're gonna do with utilities, if that seems reasonable in this instance, then you can bring that waiver. Sidewalks, pedestrian walkways, plazas, crosswalks within the Seaport District are to be drivable, brick pavers, soldiering brick edges, or equivalent, I should say, pavers, okay? And what they're basically saying is that we don't wanna put that application in one section of our property. And what they're telling you is they want to put stamped concrete in that sort of portion area that you have there. You saw the pictures up this time, it wasn't revisited. But they're basically saying, "We think this is a better application here in, rather than pavers." And you've heard, you've heard some testimony concerning this, you know, the pavers places that we put in the Seaport area, generally foot traffic, generally those kinds of things, generally, and again, it's not our burden to come up with the application, but this is a higher traffic area. We wanted to put something else here, we wanted to put a different color, they wanted to put a different color in contrast. Again, if that's a practical application in this instance, you can, you have the basis to bring that waiver. Lighting streets gates will be, and this is, talk about the pole, about fifteen feet. That's actually what our standard says, this is about fourteen, fifteen feet. There were pros and cons to the six. And when he asked that direct question, it was, "Well, we're kinda hitting heights that we think generally can hit in and about the borough, and we're using the type of lamp that you're proposing." This is, again, sort of a unique site. The heights are not gonna be compared to the next commercial building over. It's really to itself. And if you find that that's a practical application, if you need to be about fifteen feet at fourteen-six, go with this. Loading and unloading areas shall be screened around their perimeter by a strip of minimum five feet wide. This screening strip may be omitted when areas cited are adjacent to a twenty-five-foot-wide buffer. Applicant does not propose to place a screening. You've heard the testimony that they had, the loading, the unloading areas. We have other design features here, also with the parts, the trash utilities. We have other design features here, trash utilities inside, why would you put a screening there? Unloading areas, which are unique to themselves, why would you put a screening there? If that's not a reasonable response, then you don't need a waiver. If you think that's a reasonable response, you can add that in. Let me, let me frame a resolution for you. I'm gonna get to conditions. For some reason, I've, my notes have not been comprehensive enough to cover. We can figure out the additional conditions, and we'll also address that. The R Belmar Urban Union LLC is ceding and c from the building by way of agreement of the municipal grant approval with variance waiver waiting for removal of existing improvements at the site and construct a four-story apartment building. Consisting of a hundred and seventy-eight market units and an additional twenty of affordable housing units for a total of a hundred and ninety-eight residential units. Not gonna give you the bedroom counts, you've heard of those, I won't be sure of the record that the board have had. There's also gonna be a residential amenities package, which is gonna include areas for passive recreation, grilling stations, gym, clubhouse, pool, as well as residential leasing office on the ground floor. They are proposing parking, you've heard that parking space is proposed, including EV charging stations, somebody made credit stations, somebody made compliance stations, as well as public parking along West Railroad Avenue. Development also includes associated surface loading areas, driveways, parking garage, landscape areas, restoring water management facilities in the Seaport Redeveloped Zone based upon the Amendment Plan of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, with the property's opening. By way of conditions, the applicant has agreed with the board to the roofs that they will be standing seen in a light gray in color. They have also agreed with the stone will be somewhat lighter than the wooden materials here.
Doug, I'd actually like to get the colors off the back of the samples to be provided, and put that in the resolution, if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
They're on there.
If I may, I'm just wondering, but if I may, Mark had a personal emergency to run out, so we apologize for his absence.
That's okay.
We're fine with you proceeding.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just wanna be more specific than, period.
The light stone?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's now more than, that's stated.
I just want those three, the rest of it, but I wanna make sure.
I will have you step down and put those apart.
Linda will be looking over my shoulder.
We're getting into conditions. I will start again. If the roof standing seen will be a light gray. That the show will be a slightly lighter color, we'll hold on to the board with the chart that we will get, us will-serve letters, or at least updated will-serve letters. We'll resolve the placement of the mirrors. By way of discussions with the borough planner, borough engineer, our preference is obviously in that area that we described, if we're gonna have to be outside, obviously.
We have the loading area, yeah.
Yeah, the gas would like them inside, but if not, in that, in that area that we discussed. And again, I'm saying this in a positive, that the applicant has agreed that there will not be any leases less than six months, ten percent max of the units at any one given time will only be, that'll be the cap on the amount that you can have, not less than twelve months.
And it will not advertise?
And not advertise, for seasonal rental.
No, short-term lease.
Short-term lease. The applicant will also, as I said, will provide separate metering to each residential unit. They will still continue to effort where they've done to put utilities on the ground. They will continue to pursue removal of the utility poles. Think they committed to providing a sustainability checklist. AC units will be on top of the building, as well as the generators, power generators. No habit of areas should be created on the roofs of the building. They will consult with the engineer concerning lighting specifically to ensure that there will be no light spillage to neighboring residents. I'm going to put this in subject to the caveat, respect on record for the applicant's reply. It's a form of the developer of the site in accordance with the recommendation of the common since borough engineer and planner's reports, subject to your specific reserve. Think those are all the conditions that I have so far.
I have two more that were actually in the letter. The applicant will provide a geotechnical analysis. The borough engineer will provide a retaining wall design plan and calculations.
Providing, providing.
Retaining wall design plan and calculations.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. Would like to articulate your reasons for variance, would like to articulate your reasons for waiver, for granting that. So the roofers will not be able to vote this evening. Certainly because he, though he was not able to sit in on the last application and didn't get a chance to hear those things, I'm sure he was not able to vote on the application. A yes vote is a positive vote.
Jake, before we go vote, is it appropriate to go back to the applicant and discuss a common thread that the public and any members of the board have discussed, which is?
The branding, maybe?
Yeah, talk, talk some about the branding.
How somebody can make at least a short closing.
Absolutely. And if you would, please make a comment regarding that, so the board knows where the applicant stands.
Yeah, so we've been going back and forth during the discussion. Mr. Meister's previous decision was, you wanna say it yourself?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I'm not trying to shortcut what Mark may say, but I've had a little back and forth with my principal, and while we do prefer Vermella Mar or something like that, because Mar, Ocean, Marina, all that kind of was connected, there was some connectivity there, we were looking at as part of the branding. We will, however, agree to consider Mar by Vermella or some alternative by Vermella. I can't commit to that being the name or the form of the name, but I've expressed your concerns to him. I've discussed with, with Courtney here, and we also have discussed with our marketing team and given them that insight, so we will be looking into it and considering it, much the same, but considering your other.
At this point, if we're gonna vote on the resolution.
Pardon me?
You kinda need to commit that, at this point, if we're gonna vote on the resolution. I don't know.
I can't give you a commitment to the final branding of the building, and candidly, I've never in thirty-five years of doing this could ask to commit to the naming of a building.
We gave you the limited floor, not to argue, but to make the concession. I don't mean to be, I don't wanna cut you off.
I understand that. All, the concession I can give is that we will give it strong consideration. We've heard the request, and we will adhere to that and consider the branding recommendations that the board has suggested.
We're not just saying, "Hey, we won't use the word Vermella, period."
No, that's not gonna happen. It's a Vermella product.
I respect that.
I respect that.
Yeah, respectfully, we can't.
Once again, I'm gonna try to find some kind of little ground here.
Agreed.
So if we can have, you know, some type of, we'll let you come up with that marketing need, whatever it is, but, you know, along the lines of some kind of shore-based theme or something by Vermella, but the name of the property, whatever that may be, will be the large part of the sign, similar to what you have Vermella in, and then, by Vermella will be the size of what Belmar was on the sign, meaning Vermella will downplay, and the name of the sign, the name of the property, will be that C-short theme that's a larger scale. Is that acceptable?
I'm making that request, right?
Why don't we take a five-minute break? Please don't discuss anything amongst yourselves.
Yeah, take a five-minute break. Ten forty-nine, we're back at it at ten fifty-five.
Please don't discuss.
Please don't get lost.
Don't get lost.
Please.
Hey, Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Last name?
Here.
Mr. Lincoln?
Here.
Hold on. Try to, sorry, let's do it.
Here. Hey, can I have any additional presentation? So, just some closing arguments and remarks. The applicant is prepared to commit to the name TBD, something shore, higher, something Belmar, something location, you know. We don't know what the names will be, because we're concerned, very much concerned, we're concerned that market studies that need to be done, but we will gladly work with the board's planner to come up with a name that's catchy. We want a successful project, so that's what we're, we're all. Are you with basically giving the name the top building? By Vermella. Thank you for that. I do have some other closing comments.
Yeah, please, please continue.
So the first thing I'd like to say... So the first thing I'd like to say is really to the public, that stuck around so long, the care so much about this community, um, everything that the mayor said about his stance on development is absolutely accurate. Nobody should think that Belmar rolled over here for some thought. This original application was over two hundred and forty units, was six stories tall, did have multiple levels of parking involved, but it also had retail components, including a rooftop restroom. And that application changed the political makeup of the borough, and it changed the application, it led to years of litigation, and it ultimately led to this project, which was a cooperative process despite the litigation that we went through. We do think that it was a cooperative project, the borough attorneys were deeply involved in this, the borough planners were involved in it, the borough engineers were involved in it, still imagine it, and we've come up with what we think is really a beautiful asset to this community. It's hard to sit up there, and I represent five boards, and my communities are going through the same thing, I know exactly what you're feeling, I know exactly what the emotion is when you see your community changing, but this guy is not gonna fall. You know, I am sure when they put George Washington Bridge in Fort Lee, everybody thought the town's gonna be destroyed, when they put the second level in, the town's gonna be destroyed, when two eighty-seven got finished through Marsh County, the town's gonna be destroyed, yep. Growth is part of society. People need places to live. The affordable housing crisis in this state is real, it's terrible. The mechanism that we have is imperfect, but it's necessary, we need places for people to live. Housing costs, we know, is insane, and the only way to combat it is perhaps to break control, that's certainly something that you should look at, but creating more supply is really important, and this is a part of it. And I don't think the public should overlook some of the other benefits that this project is gonna bring to the community. There's a pilot agreement that's gonna generate substantial revenues for the community, far above what Pat's Motel and the K-Rod facility is producing. There's a two million dollar payment to the borough, so that the borough can do what someone on the public side, which would build affordable housing where we want to build it. That is a real substantial amount of money to help the community decide where it wants to put a hundred percent affordable housing project, to reduce other projects like this, if that's what you want to do. This project is gonna bring residents to Belmar that are gonna live here a year round, this is not a seasonal rental project, I think we beat that horse to death, but this is gonna be residents living here, shopping here, going to supermarkets, the restaurants, the bars, patronizing local businesses. People, no doubt, there are gonna be at least some residents that are living here, that are gonna be working, at least twenty units are gonna be deed restricted for affordable housing. That's people that can live here and work at jobs in the entertainment industry, that can work in, in the shops that are local, that maybe can't afford to rent a house in town or buy a house in town. There is a value to affordable housing, twenty units of affordable housing, it's like a whole little community. This is a vast improvement, I think, over what's there. I've met the Rappatties, they're really nice people, but that model is tired, it's been tired for a long time. This is gonna be a far grander entrance, two people coming to visit Belmar, and we think it's, it's really gonna be an asset. I hope that through this application process, we've demonstrated to you a willingness, a true willingness, to work with the community, from changing the architecture, from adding the bicycle racks, and we will continue to look at that, to see if we can refine it and add more bicycle spaces. We're gonna continue as the plan's sharpened up, if we can add parking, we'll add parking, there are some spaces in the garage that are set aside for mechanical, we'll work with the boards, staff to determine maybe we could add a parking space here, or two parking spaces, or another space for ten bicycles, whatever everyone thinks is most appropriate, we're, we're willing to do that. Regarding the variances, we think that the proofs are flexible, two-C variants have been that. The signage is appropriate, I would verify, the Starburst is really an architectural detail, it's almost artwork. Taking the Vermella name off of the building, the drive-in test of Marriott, I thought was an appropriate comment, Chairman, um, it's not like that, this is not like the institutional look of the building, it's gonna be a gorgeous first-class rental project, and we hope that you're all gonna be as proud of it as we are. I ask for your favorable thoughts.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the application with conditions as outlined by Mr. Gobas, as well as-
The supplement.
And the supplement, and the comments, uh, that was made by the attorney regarding the naming convention.
Motion.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Picoli?
Yes.
Mr. Blasio?
No.
Mr. Rickerman?
Yes.
Mr. Lindley?
Yes.
The Sharkes?
Yes.
Very, very reluctantly, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pinto.
Thank you. All right, can I have a, excuse me, before we close the meeting, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment about anything outside of this application relevant to the planning board? If you'd like to make any comment, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address. Seeing no one, I'll close the public voting, and I have a motion to close the evening's meeting. I'll motion, can I get a second?
All right. All right.
Bye.
Thank you.